Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you. Mayor Ford?
Here.
Mayor Protem Bullock?
Here.
Councilman Amador?
Present.
Councilman Teeter?
Here.
Councilwoman Carson?
Present.
Councilman Diaz?
Here.
Councilmember McElDowney? Councilwoman Elliott?
Present.
Councilmember Douglas?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And for the record, everyone's here except for Mr. McElDowney. I haven't heard from him yet this evening, but I'm assuming he'll be here maybe late. But just as a precaution, I'm open for a motion to allow for an excused absence for Mr. McElDowney if the council so desires.
So moved.
Is there a second, Mr. Amador?
Second.
A motion and a second to allow Mr. McElDowney to have an excused absence for this evening. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I'd like to ask everybody in the audience to please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to ask the staff to please pass around the microphone, allow the residents and guests to introduce themselves. And for the record, Mr. McElDowney is here. Welcome, Mr. McElDowney.
Daniel Gould?
Ryan McDermott, O'Shea Holmes?
Bob Monzango, South Adams County Fire Department?
Kevin Vincel, South Adams County Fire Department?
Dave Beweiler, South Adams County Fire?
Tricia Mason, Community Development?
Kathy Blighman, Human Resources?
James, Community Development?
Thank you.
Mike Brown, Parks and Recreation?
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation?
Daniela Golden, Resident of River Run Neighborhood?
Kate Kramer, Go Wild Northeast Metro Coalition?
Beth Nobles, Sand Creek Regional Greenway Partnership?
Cheryl Steinberg, CDBG Coordinator?
Maria DeAndre, Public Works?
State Senator Andy Kerr?
All right, thank you all for being here this evening. First item on the agenda is proclamations and recognitions. I'd like to invite Ms. Kramer forward. Ask the city attorney to read a proclamation.
Proclamation: Whereas Kate Kramer, the Sand Creek Regional Greenway Partnership Executive Director, has accepted the position of Go Wild Northeast Metro Coalition Manager following over thirteen years of service to the SCRGP as the executive director, whereas efforts to improve, preserve, and promote the natural, recreational, and cultural resources of the Sand Creek Regional Greenway corridor bear Ms. Kramer's imprint, be it her collaborative work with partners through securing funds in excess of seventeen million dollars, extensive volunteer opportunities, and interactive environmental education workshops. Whereas during her tenure, she served as a community advocate, helping advance Commerce City's vision, advancing the Sand Creek Regional Greenway, a fourteen-mile public greenway connecting the Highline Canal and Aurora with the South Platte River Greenway in Commerce City, passing through northeast Denver and the new Stapleton community, and promoting the greenway as a jewel in the necklace of trails that has made the Denver metro area a national model for linked trail systems. Whereas the lasting impact of Ms. Kramer's contributions is found in the leadership, integrity, and values she brought to the Sand Creek Regional Greenway Partnership and the Commerce City community, serving as a role model for all who choose public and nonprofit service. Now therefore, the city council of Commerce City honors Kate Kramer for her exemplary career and commitment to build a quality community for a lifetime through the relentless pursuit of excellence.
Thank you. All right, proclamation's been read. We are having a problem with our lights and requests to speak, so, uh, councilors?
I'm having all kinds of technical difficulties down here as well, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure that you guys all know the lights aren't working. If you want to say something, or you want to make a motion, you're gonna need to get my attention. All right. Title's been read, or the proclamation's been read. Is there a motion to accept? Mr. Bullock?
Move to accept the proclamation.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Teeter? I have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation is read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Ms. Kramer, please. The podium is yours.
Well, thank you very much, and I, uh... There are so many people to thank. It's been thirteen years of partnerships and collaboration. And first, Renee, who's actually a founder of the Greenway. He was here in the nineties when we just thought we'll never get this done because it hasn't been tried before in this, in this whole region. And instead, twenty years later, we have an absolutely beautiful greenway, which, by the way, was voted the best greenway in the Denver metro region by Westward just about three months ago. So you can all be very proud of what you and your staff have done over the years to make this the best greenway. I especially want to thank your staff. You have wonderful people working here. Mike, and Carolyn, and Tracy, and Rogelio, and Willie, and everybody who makes that place absolutely wonderful every day for the many thousands of trail users who use it. The partners in the community are also really important. Suncor, Metro Wastewater, UPS, all of them are strong partners in the, in the growth of the Greenway. I'd like to, if I can, introduce the new executive director of the Sand Creek Regional Greenway, Beth Nobles. Why don't you come up here, Beth? And Beth, we are extremely lucky to have Beth. She has been most recently working with Bike Texas, which is a great organization, again, a real partnership organization that works across the whole state of Texas. She, prior to that, did a lot of fundraising for the University of Iowa, and she also was the executive director of an organization in West Texas which does exactly what the Greenway does, which is basically build greenways and trails and bikeways. So we are extremely lucky to have Beth, and you will be seeing a lot of her, I hope. Beth, do you have anything to say?
I just want to say thank you very much. I'm thrilled to be here, and I look forward to working with all of you and the staff of all the communities along the Greenway. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. I know, Kate, that there are several council members that probably have something great to say. I want to thank you for all the years of service, the time I got to spend with you as a member of the Friends of the Front Range. And I know my Mayor Protem has been actively involved for a long, long time with the Sand Creek Greenway. So we appreciate everything that you've done and your partnership with Commerce City. Mr. Bullock?
Okay, thank you. I want to also thank you, Kate. I was there the day you got there, and I was there the day you left, you know, but it's been evolving the whole time because you're never really leaving. You're just serving different groups within the same groups that help keep all the greenways and the parks and everything going, and not just in Commerce City. With Inspire, you'll be this whole north metro region. So it's not like you're really leaving. You're just leaving Sand Creek. But trust me, we're still on the Friends of the Front Range, and I will be seeing you. But it's sad that, you know, I guess it's sad and glad because I, you're not going anywhere, so, you're not going nowhere, so it's not sad. But I'm glad for you for your, you're moving up to a different position. And, but you keep visiting Sand Creek because, you know, we, we're just, we never stop. We just keep on going. We're like that Energizer Bunny.
Right.
Okay. But thank you so much for your service, and thank you for everything you helped me do, and you did for Commerce City. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, I have the council join me down front, please. Okay. You want me to test it?
If, see if a request for speak comes up.
All right, someone want a request to speak?
No.
No, nothing's working. It's all right, we'll, we'll do it old school. All right, next item on the agenda is citizen communication. Per council policy, citizen communication is a time on our agenda for the public to address the council on business and affairs of the city. The city council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may become before. Council, please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. Please give your name and address for the record, and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. After you have heard from those people who signed up to speak, okay, we're good to go. I've got five people signed up to speak this evening. We're gonna start with South Adams County Fire Department. If you will, come on up. Chief? Is the fire out?
Yes, he stinks. Been a busy day.
I know.
Good evening, council. I wanted to give a little update about our response plan with our new, what we call CAD-to-CAD system.
Uh-huh.
It's a little bit different, so there's been a little bit of confusion on why we see other fire apparatus and ambulance, if you will, crisscrossing into neighborhoods, if you will. So I'm gonna read a little press release that we had drafted that will be in the paper, and also we'll eventually have it on our website, but I wanted to come to council and read this to you, and I'll leave a copy with Laura, if that's okay, you know, just for your reference. And then any questions, Chief Monzango here is the chief of operations. He can answer them to a T on exactly how the if, ands, why, what, and where. So, "As we continue to improve service to our citizens, you are likely to see an increase in the variety of fire engines from neighboring departments coming into our district. I want to take this opportunity to explain how our new closest unit dispatching works." So that's the thing, is the closest unit dispatch now. "Closest unit dispatching sends the closest qualified resource to the citizens effing an emergency regardless of jurisdiction." We have been developing this system for two years through AdCom for South Adams County Fire, Brighton Fire, Adams County Fire, North Metro Fire, and soon Thornton Fire Department. Essentially, the five fire departments operate with a unified front, sharing resources and getting the closest fire engine or ambulance medic to all residents and businesses when the emergency occurs. The automated dispatching resource sharing concept is done at no additional cost to the departments. One of the biggest benefits of this closest unit system is the ability to staff high acuity situations, such as structure fires, within adequate resources, with adequate resources. As little as three years ago, a structure fire in South Adams County Fire District would get a response of two apparatus. Today, with the new system, five apparatus are on scene for a first alarm structure fire. These additional units allow for shorter work cycles for our crews, less time in the hazard zone, which minimizes exposure to carcinogens and rapid intervention crews, less time in the hazard zone, I'm sorry, crews and our dedicated fire rescue teams. Another benefit to the system is the ability to maintain an effective response in our district. As stated previously, three years ago, a simple single-family house fire would have depleted all of the South Adams County Fire resources. In essence, so, three, three years ago, when we get a fire, everybody, you know, within the district will go. Today, it's more of a unified system. With closest unit dispatch, we have at least one or two of the apparatuses to handle additional calls. So if we get a call, and I kind of goes into detail, if we get a call, say a structure fire in our district, and let's say it's at the, at the south end, usually Brighton will filter in to cover the north end. Okay? What this means to South Adams County is we are likely to see Brighton Fire responding to the northern part of our city while other units may occasionally dispatch into the southern part of Brighton's district. The south end of the district works much the same. Adams County Fire may be utilized to cover calls. They are closer, and we may cover portions of their eastern border if we are closer. The big takeaway is there's no longer boundaries between jurisdictions. Our battalion chiefs and crews constantly monitor our resource status to ensure we have an adequate amount of South Adams County Fire units in our district at all times. In an effort to give us the best level of service and care for our community, we are all on board with this program. We continue to see the benefits of this system every day. Our goal is to serve our community with pride and excellence in professional, responsible manner. Closest unit dispatching helps us achieve this by providing rapid response while still effectively managing our resources. For instance, today, when we had that fire, again, it's, you know, we still had units available in our district while Adams County Fire sent additional resources. So that's why you're seeing the, you know, the crossed resources. There's been a lot of questions and confusion. This CAD-to-CAD just, you know, we're still in the beginning stages of it as we refine it. It's real technical, but I'll be more than happy to, and if I can't answer them, obviously Chief Monzango will be able to go into detail. But our objective here is to get it to the citizens of, the whole point of this is getting somebody to the emergency as fast as possible.
That sounds great. I'm glad, you know, anything that improves safety in our community. And I would guess that Brighton and Thornton and some of these other communities will see South Adams on occasion.
Yeah, it's, it's a, I'll use fifty-fifty, but we cover their district as well as they cover ours.
Right.
Depending on the situation.
Perfect. Is there anyone on council have any comments? Mr. Amador?
I'll just start by saying, thank you, chief, for the communication. And I think it's important that you come before us and let us know in the spirit of really good communication. So I really appreciate that, especially when we'll be the ones that kind of take questions about, hey, what's going on in this fire over here? But I saw, you know, Adams County, like you said, over here instead of this. So I think it's important to just hear from you, and I really applaud you for coming and letting us know. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Andrew. And again, for instance, today, there was two fires that broke out at the same time. We had one at Waste Management, and then we had one up north, right on our border, on Brighton's border. So we had two relatively, you know, good-sized fires going on at the same time. So without this system, it would be very difficult, you know, we would be, in the old system, we would have a bunch of our resources at that Waste Management fire, and then we'd have to, you know, try to delegate other sources to help others. So this is just more of an organized, unified system.
Great. Jady?
Chief, thank you for coming, and I appreciate everything you all do. I do have a couple of questions, though, and hopefully some of the residents in River Run are listening tonight, because I have been able to explain the system to them quite well. What I cannot explain is the question of, when we live that close to the fire station on one hundred and twelve, how many calls, how is it that we're seeing Brighton so often in River Run?
A lot of that can be due just to call volume.
Okay.
And, you know, again, it's the, the, kind of the luck of the draw.
So, so a truck in at that station has been called out?
Right. So, before, you know, again, the likelihood of us running out of resources, it can happen. I mean, the reality is, unfortunately, we can't schedule our emergencies. So, you know, we're starting to acquire data for peak times and really trying to do a lot of resource utilization. But the short answer is, it really depends on what's going on at the time. Like today, you know, we were busy all day. We had between fifty and seventy-five percent of our units committed from probably noon to about twenty minutes ago. So, you know, having those partners to come in and help service our community, it's a win for everybody.
No, and I fully agree. It, it gets a little confusing for taxpayers wanting to know the mill levy and who's getting what resources, and that it's not costing Commerce City residents?
Nope. It's the same thing as Brighton.
That's right.
They called us today to go into their area to help them. It was the same as the tire fire. And medical's working the same way. It's the same thing. We, we respond medically-wise different than the surrounding areas. So we are not a fire-based EMS. We have a private contract.
Well, I was gonna ask that as the next question.
Yeah, so, that, the thing about that is, we have, we have an abundance of ambulances. We have, we have an advantage to that. So we have a lot of ambulances. However, when those ambulances get very busy, and so that ambulance, let's say, at stations, you know, that picks up a patient at Station Seven area, and they're on their way to the hospital, and somebody else has an emergency in that area, they're gonna tone the closest unit. And the CAD system, through AdCom, our dispatch, is what picks that up, and it just automatically goes to that unit. So it's, it's a computer dispatch system that basically it sends the closest unit.
Can you clarify for me? One of the comments that I was given was that each department has a different protocol, and that our fire department does not run on all medical, and the other fire departments do run on all medical. So that is why you're getting a response from that fire engine? Is that, is that correct, chief?
Sort of. Sort of. It all depends on the, on the nature of the call. Go ahead. Yeah, so, to explain better, what most fire departments do is when there's a medical call, most fire departments, North Metro's a good example, will send an engine or a fire truck and an ambulance.
Correct.
To my way of thinking, I believe in, like, solid resource utilization, sending the right tool for the right job. If you stub your toe, you don't need our fire engine there. So we don't run on the lower acuity calls. You know, we run on the more serious calls because those are the ones where typically more hands are needed, or possibly a rider goes in to help the paramedics with the patient. So that's the difference in our system is we don't run every call. We pick the high acuity calls where we are likely to be able to provide service. That way, if you stub your toe at your house and your house catches on fire, our fire engine isn't tied up on your stubbed toe. You know, we have the right resources available for the right jobs. And I believe it's, it's a trend. You'll start seeing people pick up, just because we're getting busier every year, and you just, if you don't effectively manage your resources, you miss opportunities to serve your citizens. We, we take some statistics just real quick on, so we'll talk about ambulance service real fast. They, out of a hundred percent of EMS calls, statistics show that only fourteen percent of those actually need an ambulance, and out of that fourteen percent, only six of them need a transport. So, you know, we take some of those statistics, and like Chief Monzango said, we don't, we try to do utilization of our resources very, very carefully. So we do things a little bit different. We believe that it's a, you know, we are, I don't know if you want to call it a trendsetter, or you're just, we're, you know, try to be ahead of our time. But, you know, for the taxpaying citizens out here, we find it not very helpful to send an engine to, you know, a low-acuity call.
Thank you. That was a great explanation.
Mr. McElDowney?
Gentlemen, thanks for being here tonight for the update. I actually saw this in action today due to the Waste Management fire. I was actually on I-76, headed eastbound, and saw the Adams County unit jump on the highway and saw the plume of smoke and suspected they were on their way to help. I think, you know, growing up with a father in the fire service, I was always familiar with the term mutual aid, and what you're describing to me is a more data-driven version of what I knew of in the, the old fire service, right? And I think your point about the, the technology in place, that to me is, is great, right? Because it, it allows the system to help share that burden with dispatch and be able to make decisions and analyze situations faster than that individual would. I think, again, your explanation for Ms. Carson made great sense. All too often, we hear folks, whether it's cities, schools, or fire departments, talk about, you know, are you spending your money wisely? And I think your example of, do you send a pumper on a stubbed toe incident is a perfect example, right? I mean, the cost of the fuel and the staff and the wear and tear on that vehicle for running that call versus running a smaller, you know, appropriate vehicle for that makes perfect sense. And I appreciate the leadership and the partnership with our peer agencies. I think, I may be mistaken, but I think the fire in South one was another great example recently where that was jointly responded to by both Brighton and South Adams. I can only guess, in part, because of things going on elsewhere in the district. So I think it's wonderful to see that partnership, and I really appreciate it. Anything that we can do to help get that word out, we're more than happy to do so.
Well, to add on to that, so the, if it's the fire I'm talking, you're talking about, we had a fire where we had both South Adams and Brighton responded, and they saved a lady from a basement, just due to the, you know, you know, the sheer amount of quick resources that were at that call.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Teeter?
Anything that we can do to help get that word out, we're more than happy to do so.
Well, to add on to that, so the, if it's the fire I'm talking, you're talking about, we had a fire where we had both South Adams and Brighton responded and they saved a lady from a basement just due to the, you know, you know, the sheer amount of quick resources that were at that call.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Teeter?
Thank you, Chief, for the update. Like you said, changing times, we go with the flow. I know one of the areas that's really going to improve for us now is the trailer park at North County Village. We've been trying to get Thornton to take over that area for I know six, seven years. They don't want it because it's a trailer park. And we, only reason why we wanted to give it up was our response time, that is the highest response time this district has. And we've been trying to solve that problem with letting Thornton have it. So now it's going to help those people in North County Village and it'll also help us with our ISO inspection. And I know it's got to help AdCom now when it comes to dispatching who is, what jurisdiction it is and whose call it is also.
Very much so. Thanks, Mr. Teeter. That's a great explanation. In fact, I require the BCS to submit us a report of the aid given and the aid received. And I was looking just today and there was probably three or four different calls where Thornton has picked up North County Village. So, yeah, great comment, absolutely.
Great. Anyone else? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Chief, for coming in and giving us the presentation and update. Councilwoman Carson touched on a lot of things I wanted to ask, so I'm not going to repeat that. So I just wanted to add on, on the CAD system, what's, what's a boundary as far as, how far out do you guys go? And then same thing on our borderlines to the west?
Well, our, our official boundaries of the district, so north boundary is 120th, western boundary is the Platte River, the southern boundary is 48th Avenue. And then the eastern boundary is technically kind of goes around the DIA border, Tower Road area, but that's our official boundaries. But with this new system, it's, and I don't remember who made the comment about, let's, I think it was Mr. Teeter about like who do we send? That's what's the beauty about this now is it's not, well, should we send this unit or this unit? It just automatically hits the closest unit and dispatches them. Now, there's also a lot of internal communications that go on like, okay, you know, this ambulance may be a little bit closer, so on and so forth. So there is a little bit of that, but it just automatically gets the right resources to the right call.
So I imagine this is on a, on a, on a board, active live board where you can see these things occurring and when a call comes in based on GPS, it will give you as far as location and who could get there quickest? Is that based on location?
Yeah, it's all done by GPS location. So all the rigs basically have a, the computer inside so they can see where everybody's at. And as Chief said, it's constantly evolving. I'm sure everybody's familiar with about two years ago, the Corona fire, Thornton, the big apartment fire. Well, they got three alarms on that. And one of the things that we kind of learned from that is by the time you get to three alarms, you can strip all of your neighbors of help pretty easily. So as the system evolves, we're looking at pulling in second and third alarms from, we may be pulling in from as far as Westminster, Wheat Ridge, Orvada for those alarms. That way it allows our neighboring cities, you still have, we still have to cover our city. We still have to have resources to protect our community. So as the system evolves, it gets bigger, but it allows us to manage those very large incidents through, nobody has to make any decisions. It tells you who's coming. It knows the closest unit while still helping us maintain a response level for our citizens.
Okay, that's great to know. And I recently went to a Smart City Conference, they were talking about communication through fire districts. And some of these other states allow texting as, you know, putting out for a call because sometimes you can't get a cellphone signal, but you can get a text, text out. Do, is there a capability of, if somebody receiving a text from you guys?
We do, we currently can receive calls in three different ways. We have a radio system, we have what's called our first end alert system, the station alerting system. And we also receive notifications via text or cellphone or tablet.
Okay.
So that way it's kind of a multiple redundancy should something happen at AdCom. We still get the automatic notification through the text that goes to an app. So I mean, it'll, it gives you the notes that the dispatcher typed in. We can hit a button, it'll route them to the address. So it's pretty advanced and getting more advanced every day.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Bullock?
Now, this question goes back to the Fourth of July weekend and the weekend after it and the weekend before it and the war zone. I was all over the metro area. I was up in Erie for their fireworks display and before they even got started, it sounded like a war zone up there. After it was over, it was a war zone. Everywhere I was at, fireworks were abundant. Now, I know they're illegal in Commerce City. I know they're illegal everywhere. Thor, I mean Aurora did a partial lifting of a ban on certain fireworks. How many calls of any kind of serious nature of injuries or anything that you guys have just behind fireworks and fires and stuff like that? Because it's gotten to be ridiculous here in the city. But it's not just us. It's everywhere. I mean, I don't understand how people can spend that much money on fireworks, but they do. But can you give us any kind of, what kind of fireworks type calls that you had over this? And they're still going off. I heard them last night, you know?
Well, I, that question was brought up to me the Fourth of July, that same exact question, and I had answered in my 22 years as in the fire department. I said, you know, during the Fourth of July, it's hit and miss. Some Fourth of Julies, there's nothing. Other Fourth of Julies, it's, it can be a tad bit crazy from anything from medical to injury accidents to structure fires. But I can only remember about three actual fires of significance around the Fourth of July. One of those being two years ago where we had over at the Steel Company off of Dahlia there, that was a big fire, really big fire. But then, no sooner did I say that, we had a garage fire from fireworks. So Fourth of July obviously can be relatively busy, yes. So I could give you a statistic on how many calls? I can't, but I can tell you that the call volume is usually, it goes up on the Fourth of July. It's something we prepare for. All city, all fire departments do.
And we typically, for that time of year, will add another maybe engine just because call volume, it does get hard to manage. So, you know, it costs us money, it's hard for us to man, you know, manage those calls. So I would agree with you. I, I don't know where these people get their money to fire these things off like they do, but it, it, it's a burden on our organization.
I know. Our, our police department couldn't even keep up with the amount of calls that they had. And the only way you do it is put a policeman on every corner and no, no city has that kind of resource to do that. Especially just for one small period of time, you know? But thank you anyway.
All right, anyone else? Thank you, Chief. And Chief for coming in and congratulations on your new building.
Yeah, I should have said it's 60/50 Syracuse Street, so we had to call Google and Apple because nobody could find anything. And, you know, we get a lot of the city's traffic now, so, which is good, they get to come in the building and see it, so.
Good.
But, yeah, it's, it's a...
Welcome anytime.
Yep, it's definitely a, it's a shell shock for us, so, but we're a...
Good for you.
Good, yeah.
All right, thanks for the advice.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have Dee Golden. Come on up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Daniela Golden. I'm a resident of River Run neighborhood. The street address is 11855 East 114th Avenue Henderson. And I'm here today to discuss the fireworks show that occurred in our neighborhood. The fireworks lasted over two hours in the Timig Park around the elementary school. And the fireworks ended about 10:45 PM that night. I'd like to discuss how it impacted my family personally. In previous years, we had seen spent fireworks in our backyard. No telling what was actually put on our roof at the time. Thank goodness we had no fire that time. My husband is a 10-year military veteran and he returned home with post-traumatic stress. Therefore, he does not handle triggers such as fireworks very well. And thirdly, our two dogs were traumatized by being exposed to a non-stop two-hour fireworks in our neighborhood. Some of you may have similar stories to share. Let's talk about, take this on a city level. My understanding is that the city received approximately 380 calls that night. And I also understand that three or four fires were caused by the illegal fireworks. Let's take this, let's talk about how we can do better next year for the city. There's some steps we could explore, and I'm just a private citizen, brainstorming with you. Define roles and responsibilities with the city, with the police department, with the Adams County and the Sheriff's Department. Be proactive. Broadcast consequences to all neighborhoods. And consider forming a task force with the citizens in the neighborhoods. In closing, does anyone have any recommendations for the Sheriff McIntosh to return my phone calls in this regard? Thank you for your time.
You have a few comments. I meet with all of the mayors of Adams County on a bimonthly timeframe. And so North Glenn, Federal Heights, Broomfield, Westminster, Thornton, Brighton, we're all in attendance at this last meeting. And I brought up that our city council at our prior meeting had mentioned sending a letter to our county commissioners requesting that they make it not, make it to where people cannot sell fireworks in the county that are not legal in the county. So you can go to areas up by the 58th Avenue in Washington, Federal, there are fireworks type shops and you can buy anything of any proportion. And you can, and Adams County, you can only light off certain kinds of things. So we want, if, if we can get the county commissioners to help us by not allowing those to be sold in the county, maybe we can curtail some of this. As you heard earlier, there's, I live in River Run myself, and when I drove home that evening, my son said, "It's great. You can see 15 different communities, cities, fireworks displays." And when I got home, I had to tell him, "We don't have 15 different cities that border us and that those are all coming out of neighborhoods." And for me to drive up to our subdivision at River Run and seeing things like three, four-inch type mortars coming out of backyards was very concerning. But that wasn't just our neighborhood, it was every neighborhood. I did have to go to the vet and get tranquilizers for my dog to prepare for the Fourth of July. The problem is, the Fourth of July isn't any longer on the Fourth of July. It's two or three weeks before and it's still going on three weeks later. And, you know, I'm the first one to say, I think every kid needs to be able to celebrate Independence Day and have a sparkler and a fountain or something. But the magnitude of what we've seen in our community and what the mayors of all the other Adams County communities also said that they saw was out of, out of control and hazardous. Mayor Proton Bullock mentioned that Aurora had lifted some of their ban. Well, what happened is Aurora didn't lift the fireworks ban. They had zero fireworks allowed, just like Commerce City, just like Fort Lupton and a lot of these other communities. What Aurora did was say, okay, let's allow just sparklers and fountains and some of these smaller things so that we're not the Scrooge on Fourth of July. And the press and the community picked that up, that there was no ban at all. So they really had a problem. Now they're looking at going back to total ban. We in Commerce City started having a fireworks display, which is one of the best in the state. That's why we made fireworks illegal in Commerce City was because we were spending the money to put on a display for everyone to enjoy. And we said that, that negates the, the need for people to be shooting them off in their yard. However, everybody wants to celebrate. And like I said, I'm the first one to say, I think every kid should be able to have a sparkler on Fourth of July. The problem is, it is like a war zone. And it is causing people a lot of problems. Problem is, we have a law that says you can't do it. When it's coming out of virtually every backyard in our community, it's very hard to stop. And we want our officers to enforce our laws, and they do. And I know that's a very, very hard day for them to enforce their laws. Right now, the outlook on police departments or police officers nationwide isn't what it should be. And the last thing an officer wants to do is go up and have to take away some kids' sparklers. But we gotta stop this danger to our community. It can't get worse than it was this year. I've lived here my whole life, I've never seen it this bad. So, a few things that we are doing. The rest of the mayors decided to, instead of Commerce City sending a letter to the commissioners to request not selling illegal fireworks in the county, that all of the mayors of all the cities of, all of the cities of Adams County would do it collectively so that it sent a stronger message. So that's one of the things that we can do. We can't stop people from bringing those fireworks back from Nebraska or Wyoming or whatever. But what the council has agreed to look at is increasing our fines when someone is caught with fireworks or, or lighting fireworks. And I think that fine personally should be double if it's not the Fourth of July. You know, I, I think, you know, if you're going to light off a firework, do it on the Fourth of July. But if you're going to light it off three weeks later, that's really a problem. We have a lot of people with mental illness or PTSD. My son's retired military as well. And it's hard on them every day. You might be able to take your husband out, stay somewhere away from everything one night, but you can't do it for a month and a half. So it makes it very, very tough. And I would be the first to apologize for everybody and their lack of respect for the law that we have. However, I am, I nor this council have control to be able to stop. People that speed are going to speed and we might be able to stop some of them some of the time, but we can't get all of them all of the time. And the same kind of thing happens with fireworks. And I am open to any suggestions that you may have, but this council has already talked and we are trying to take up ways to curtail the firework issue that we saw this last Fourth of July. That being stronger fees and trying to get the county to cooperate with us on not allowing illegal fireworks to be sold in the county. Anyone else have anything? JD? JD?
Ms. Bolton, thank you for coming. We spoke on the phone last week and I encouraged her to come to council and to tell the story. Council meetings are televised. And I did also encourage her to attend the Adams County Commissioners' meetings. Mayor, I did not know that the mayors were fighting together to, to set that forward, but I would recommend for any citizen who has the time and the desire to attend a Commissioners' meeting, because the mayor is correct. Those fireworks are sold right across the highway from River Run. They're right there at Bell Creek and the dunes. And they, it's, it's an illegal activity that is taking place in our city. Our police department does the absolute best that it can to keep up with these calls. The amount of calls that were responded to is ridiculous because there are true needs out here for our police to be responding to. And so when we have to pull them away over fireworks, I would triple those fines. And, and I would also probably have some community service involvement in that because so many of the times you see these leftover fireworks are not even cleaned up. So, so maybe that a good cleaning of the city, if we have 300 and some participants shooting out fireworks could spend a day cleaning the city and I think we could get a lot done that, that day. But no, I, I am very sorry that it was so difficult in your household. And, and I did notice that on social media, Facebook and Nextdoor, there's almost a bullying that is taking place when you complain about the fireworks. I know we had parents with young babies and infants being woken, animal owners, all kinds of, neighbors trying to be very neighborly, saying, you know, this has gone on for a couple hours. If this is you, could you please stop? And, and all you hear back is, it's un-American almost to complain about fireworks. But no, we, we did have some fires in the city and I appreciate that you took the time to come here tonight because like I explained, it's very difficult. time to come here tonight, because like I explained, it's very difficult. The Fourth of July happens only once a year, and, and it's very noticeable. We've got the report from the chief explaining how many calls, we've heard from citizens. But, you know, time goes by, and then we forget, or not forget, but, but other things come present, and, and so it gets put on a back burner, and then it's the Fourth of July again. And when we look at the calls and the increase, they are picking up year after year after year after year. So, you know, it, it really is the day of reckoning that we really do figure out something to do. And, and I personally feel that if you received a fine of $500 for illegally lighting fireworks, you would tell your neighbor, the neighbor would tell the other one, and we would see some of that activity curtail. So, thank you again.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, thank you very much for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
All right, Wes Atkins. I'll need you to state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Wes Atkins, 7620 East 81th Avenue, Commerce City. I am here on issues on my property. It's a industrial one-zone land. In April last year, Commerce City on Free Trash Day at the landfill, I got everything that was taken to the landfill in one location. They came by, took pictures, said it's against residential code without handing me a citation, without taking me to court. They fined me $2,000 and seized my property. They now have a lien against my property in the name of Commerce City.
Well, let me ask the city attorney, because this now is a legal issue, the council can't get involved with legal matters, but I would ask, we do have a process, and I want to make sure that process was followed, so I'm gonna turn it over to Robert.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. There is a process for appealing code enforcement citations. I understand you're saying that there was not a citation issued, so you'd have to follow up with the case file to actually review it and consult with the Community Development Department to determine whether, what process was followed in that manner, whether it was posted prior to abatement, before seeing what happened there. I'd be happy to report back to the council on that.
Would you please? Because I know we have a process where first, the first time they come and tell you that you have a problem, it's a warning that you have so much time to get it cleaned up. Then, when they have to come back and you haven't cleaned it up, then you get a fine, and that fine starts to-
Well, the code, they violate, said I was in violation, I was, gave me thirty days to clean it up. They gave me ten days to clean it up, and I was taking it to the landfill for the Free Landfill Day, put on by, sponsored by the city of Commerce City. They did not honor the Free Landfill Day. They fined me without citation, judged, jury and convicted me without going to court, which is illegal against the United States Constitution of my Bill of Rights, and fined me $2,000 and seized my property right here and now. I have no longer ownership of my property.
But you have the right to appeal that.
They told me I had no rights to appeal.
Well, I'm asking the attorney, that's what he just said.
Yes, and again, I'd be happy to report back normally. After a citation, the typical process, and there is occasionally not a courtesy notice period given, but after a citation or, in certain instances, immediate abatement is authorized, and that fine, if not paid, can be, the city can file a lien on the property until that's paid. And so that would be the, the process that the city code provides for. But again, I would have to consult the actual case file with the Community Development Department and report back to council.
Okay, thank you.
So I would be happy to take the gentleman's information and follow up if I can get your, your information to contact you.
That would be great. Mr. Atkins, because, because this has now went to the point of going to court, we have to work through our attorney. Please give him your contact information so that he can give you information as, as to how to appeal and what needs to happen.
Okay, my phone number, is that it?
Yeah, contact, yeah, but give it to him, not on the microphone.
Okay, oh man, I'm sorry, my back hurts.
Yeah, go on back to the back there and take care of it. Thank you for coming in, Mr. Atkins.
Okay. Can you get back to your chair?
All right, next, Senator Andy Kerr. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Nice to see you. I'm State Senator Andy Kerr. My address is 1680 South Iris Way in Lakewood, Colorado, so a little, little bit away from here. I wanted to come and introduce myself and observe a little bit of your process. I'm doing a bit of a tour around parts of the metro area, and I won't go into any more detail in, in respect for your non-campaning-
Sure.
-ask that you have. But I did want to come up, introduce myself. I, I see some folks up here that I already know, but very interested. As I've been going to city councils around the metro area and watching the process and hearing the feedback, I especially want to thank you for having your citizens' communication period up front, so that citizens can come in early, that you're televised, and, and folks can be at home and watch what's going on. So all of that, very open and transparent, and I applaud you on that. Just a reminder that the state legislature, when we are in session, January through May, that we also have, have similar ways of communicating with the general public on the Colorado Channel. Also, it's Channel 165 on Comcast that people can watch the proceedings of their state-elected officials. Interesting, some of the, the issues I've, I've heard already this evening, very similar to, especially around the, the Fourth of July and, and fire department issues we've, we experience in Lakewood and throughout Jefferson and Adams County. So, again, just wanted to introduce myself, and thank you for having this open and transparent process and, and seeing government at work close up.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming in tonight.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Guillermo Serna. Come on up. Good evening, and state your name and address for the record.
Guillermo Serna, 14122 East 102nd Place. About, oh, three or four weeks ago, we had a meeting at Derby on signage, and what was the best way to get people into Commerce City, into certain locations, with information, with correct direction, to bring in people and probably businesses into the city. The businesses in Derby right now are having a problem. And that problem is with the homeless. I send some photos to the mayor, and I'm sure that it's gonna be taken care of, but the problem is still gonna be there. We heard tonight the acceptance of partnerships, but sometimes we don't utilize them where maybe they are needed the most. And that's in how cities can work together to give these people a place where they may have an opportunity to go to, and maybe where officers can take them to, to maybe get fed, to maybe get clothing, and possibly the opportunity of assisting them with mental health. We talk about tonight on our service people. They need help. Sometimes they don't make the right decision because of mental health. The businesses here in Commerce City get together and are working with the mental health part of it. Our children, which is now the majority again, are in this situation also. And there's a lot of other needs that need to be taken care of. There's got to be a way where we can find a place where these people can go and get some form of assistance, not just going, picking them up, taking them to the boundary lines and letting them go. Denver right now on Brighton Boulevard are creating one heck of a situation, because they're coming to the northern part, right along the river, and sooner or later, ride around all these trail, trails, bikes down along the river that we're supposed to be enjoying. And it's not their fault on some of them, but somewhere along the line, there's got to be maybe an effort made to assist these people, because we can't look around them anymore. They're in our neighborhoods, and I know they're growing pains for this whole metropolitan area. But if we don't assist in the mental health part, it's gonna get more violent, and at the same time, we're gonna lose more children, and we keep turning it, turning it, turning it. So I'm asking city council to somehow look at this situation and ask the state, the other cities, to find some type of a direction as to what we're gonna do with them. Because signage is beautiful, but I don't think that people would want to come after they see what's happening in some of our businesses that need help, and the people themselves that need help with their situation. Thank you. It's just a, and I know that sometimes you may say, "Well, here he comes again." But I think that we should care, and we should have input when we can. Thank you.
Guillermo, thanks for coming in. I would like to let you know that when I met with all the mayors, we have talked about some of the homeless issues and what can we do, and we know that the state legislature, and I wish you would've got up and talked before the senator locked out the door.
Exactly.
But we need the state to do something. With the efforts that Denver's making, we're starting to see the, that they're pushing down the river. And our concerns aren't so much with homeless, it's the fact that there's health and, health and safety issues-
Exactly.
-along those ro, creeks and, and the river, the Platte River, Sand Creek, and our residents can't utilize the trail system because it's unsafe, there's health issues, and right now we're looking at, in the range of $60,000, just to get started cleaning that up. We go down there and start cleaning up the mess that has been made-
Exactly.
-that, then that mess is going to end up in Thornton and Brighton and, and further north in Adams County. Some of it will just reoccur in Commerce City, and we're gonna have to put together a program where we have to clean up and make sure that everything is in a position that it's okay and healthy, not, not a unsafe situation to utilize these trails. And, and it is a problem, but we can't talk around it. It's not a municipal issue, it's a state issue. All of the communities are having the same problem. And so we need the, the same legislature that is helping to do homeless bill of rights and all these things to create more rights for these people that, some of them, it's not, it's not their choice. But there is a lot of damage that's also occurring, and, and unhealthy situations that are taking place. So it's, it's a very fine line of what we can and can't do, and our staff is doing a very good job of putting together a plan together to deal with the parts of it that we can deal with. I have been getting calls from residents, people saying that, you know, there's four or five different people with shopping carts in their, on their street a day, items are missing from their yard. There's starting to be more and more concerns that, you know, theft and things of that nature. I talked to the city manager about the pictures that you sent me and the concerns, and he said at one point in time, we did have a patrol in Derby alone just for that reason, and my guess is you're gonna start seeing that again.
If I may just say one thing, Mayor.
Yeah.
We have to remind the whole Denver metro area that when they took over the new airport, this was not, this was a consequence, okay, that was not looked at when all the airport and all the new growth was happening. And I think that legislature, from the governor on down, have got to have a responsibility of doing something in one form or another. And I'm stating it here because I'll be stating it on up the line, okay? I just want you to know that, that it's not just Commerce City that I'm looking at in perspective to these people's needs, okay? And we talk about building Commerce City, okay? Well, these businesses need help, because if they, if these signs work, and we spend a lot of money on them, then when they get to this one location and they see that, they may change their mind completely. And all the efforts that we make to sell Commerce City, they go down the drain, just for that one particular reason with some people.
Do me a favor, when you see our friend Dominic Moreno-
Oh, I'll, that's, that's no problem.
Good, I'm just saying, we all need to mention it, and if enough people mention it, maybe we can get something to happen.
That's why I'm doing it here.
I know it.
Because it's hopefully heard throughout Commerce City, and maybe Adams County also.
And you know what, Guillermo? Every time I have to call you and have you come up, I go, "Oh, here we go again." That's what goes through my mind. But I want to let you know, I appreciate it when you come up and you state what needs to be stated, people need to hear it.
Thank you.
So, thank you for coming in tonight.
Okay.
All right, that takes care of our citizen communication portion of the meeting. We're gonna move on into approval of the minutes. I need a motion to allow Councilman, Councilmember Carson to abstain from voting on the minutes of May 15th, 2017, for an excused absence. Mr. Amador.
Sound move.
Mr. Douglas.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to allow for that abstention. Now I'm open for a motion to approve the minutes of May 15th. Mr. Teeter.
Make a motion, may-
Yeah, we do need to vote on the abstention. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Mr. Teeter, I need a motion for the minutes of May 15th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, May 16th?
15th. Councilwoman Elliott.
It says, oh, I see. May 15th.
Thank you. And I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of May 15th, 2017. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I need a motion in a second to allow me to abstain from voting on the minutes of May 22nd, special meeting because of my excused absence. Councilwoman Carson.
Sound move.
Mr. McElhany.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to allow for that abstention. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I need a motion in a second to approve the minutes of May 22nd, 2017. Mr. Diaz.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of May 22nd, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I have that motion in a second. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now we'll move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion in a separate vote. Tonight, there are only fourteen items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council wish to remove any item off the consent agenda for a further discussion? Mr. Douglas.
Yes, thank you. Resolution 2017-54.
Fifty-four?
Yes.
Is that the only one?
Yes.
Is there anyone that has any others that would like to be pulled from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we will pull Resolution 2017-54. So that leaves us with thirteen on the consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the title of the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Ordinance Z-932-17, an ordinance rezoning from Ag to I2. The property described in Exhibit A attached to or to and made apart hereof located at 10- 10020 Havana Street, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, reflects said rezoning. Ordinance 2127, an ordinance amending Section 21-5214 of the City of Commerce City Land Development Code by removing the separation requirement between liquor stores, taverns, beer, and wine businesses absent use by permit. Ordinance 2132, an ordinance amending the 2017 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant Funds in the amount of $50,000 for the Veterans Memorial Park Master Plan and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2135, an ordinance amending the 2017 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Colorado Department of Transportation Grant in the amount of $9,000 for DUI enforcement efforts and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2136, an ordinance amending the 2017 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by appropriating a portion of the unencumbered fund balance of the Commerce City Brighton School District Use Tax Fund, CC-BSD, in the amount of $200,000 for half the cost to upgrade the natural surface playfield located at Reunion Elementary and authorizing the expenditure thereof. Resolution 2120-17-51, resolution authorizing Fourth Amendment to the Contract for Capital Program and Project Management Services. Resolution 2017-57, resolution appointing members to designated boards and commissions of Commerce City. Resolution 2017-58, resolution approving certain city-owned properties exclusion from the Sable Altera Fire Protection District and inclusion in the South Adams County Fire Protection District. Resolution 2017-59, resolution authorizing award of contract for 2017 Slurry Seal and Asphalt Repair Project. Resolution 2017-60, resolution authorizing award of contract for 2017 Mill and Overlay Project. Resolution 2017-61, resolution approving the purchase of two Public Works Department street sweepers. Resolution 2017-62, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for the November 7, 2017 coordinated mail ballot election. Resolution 2017-68, resolution approving change order to contract with Flat Irons Constructors, Inc., for Tower Road Widening Project Regional Drainage Improvements.
Thank you. I'm open for a motion. Mr. McElhany.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Is it working, Laura? No, go ahead.
Yep, yep.
Is it?
Yes.
Our light's not blinking or nothing.
I got three in.
You got three in?
Yeah, look it up here.
All right.
I got seven, eight, nine.
That's nine, that's all of them if you got nine.
Hold on a second.
There, our screens look funny, too.
Yeah. Okay, I'm showing nine, aye, zero, nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. All right. We're going to go back to Resolution 2017-54. Mr. Douglas.
Yes. Resolution 2017-54, resolution approving contract amendment for capital improvement program, public information services. And so, go back to, you know, we had a presentation back in May 23, 2016, that we did a two-year extension. The third year, we didn't do. And on the 2K communication portion, that was not approved for $39,668. At that time, I had asked if we could, beginning in 2018, January, have our communication team take that over since those projects should be winding down and we can see if we can manage those projects. I understand that we had a study session last week, two weeks ago, and I wasn't there for that meeting. I got to the tail end of the meeting, one came up with questions, and at that time, I didn't have time to go over that. And then here we are, getting ready to approve this contract. And so, that was my ask back in 2016. Here we are, 2017, July. That communication portion went from $39,668 to asking for $60,000 now. I know it's broken down, but together says $60,000. And so, I'd like a little more clarity on that, and is it possible that our communication team can take on this project in January 2018?
Want to have more discussion, or you want to go ahead and... Why don't you lay out what you want to, Michelle, and then I'll go to discussion from the rest of the council.
Sure. Councilman Douglas, I'm pulling up the 2016 presentation, so I don't have that. We did approve a one-year extension through this year. And then, as we presented in the study session a few weeks ago, we've looked at whether or not we have the capacity to do it, but given that Tower Road, the new rec center and the existing rec center are all really going through the end of this year, we wanted to maintain continuity. And there's quite a bit of activities. And then, starting in January through May, we'll have the two rec centers, which will be pretty active through May of 2018. So we felt that those services from a continuity perspective and given our current staff resources would be better served in retaining this contract through May 2018. And then we'll go to time and materials to provide additional support. And so, we envision that towards the middle to end of 2018, we will have staff pick up some duties, but just given the volume of work associated with the remaining projects and the scope, we believe it's more prudent to maintain consistency and provide a contracted service.
Okay. Well, then on that ask then, I'm asked that this is a... that the amount be amended from the 129 down to 109 to reflect the $39,688 from 2016.
Sir, I'm not sure I'm following. We went back and looked at the scope. So the 129 includes the monthly retainer through December, then a stepped-down monthly retainer through May, and then it provides us with an allowance of about $20,000 to provide additional support services for the rest of the year. So we would, staff recommends at least maintaining the contract amendment as presented.
All right. Let me go to other questions from other council members. Mr. McElhany.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Mr. Douglas's efforts to try and ensure that we're being as savvy as we can with how we expend dollars, but I think at the end of the day, this is a fairly simple math conversation in terms of a $60,000 number that you cited earlier. I don't know of any position that we could fill that would provide the level of service to try and cost, absorb the cost, the fully loaded employee cost to perform those services. So one of the benefits of providing or working with a contracted resource for these types of things is that you have a unknown number, a significant number of resources at that entity that provide the work for you, not just one person. So you're able to get more work done in a short amount of time, you're able to get higher quality work oftentimes because of the number of resources that are brought to bear. If we were to ask, and I believe this was talked about during the study session, if we were to try and put this on the shoulders of staff, we would cripple staff. You are as close to the budget as anybody at this dais, and I don't know that we have the dollars to absorb an additional resource for this amount of work. Once you bring somebody on, the challenge is you have to continue to have dollars to program that salary and benefit and work to assign them to them. So if we don't have other work that we need, and this is where, again, if staff felt that there was an opportunity, because I think it was quite clear from all of us, that if there's an opportunity to bring work in-house, then let's bring it in-house. It's the same conversation we had with regard to CH2M on program and project management services wherein those are our tasks that certainly our staff is skilled enough to perform, but the volume and complexity and concurrent amount of work that is needed to support those projects, it doesn't make sense to try and absorb that at this time by staff. So I appreciate the questions, but I also want to suggest and encourage us to respect staff's efforts to assess the work and determine what the most affordable and cost-effective and quality approach to the solution is, and I believe that's what we've been presented.
All right. Saying no other discussion. What I'm going to do, Mr. Douglas, is if you'd like to make a motion, I'll let you make that motion. If you want to amend what's before us in any way, shape, or form, that's your right to do so.
Well, since I brought this forward, I'd like to make a proposed amendment change to the contract price, and if it fails, it fails. I'm proposing a contract amendment price from the 129,419 down to 109,419.
All right, that's formal motion. Is there a second? One more time, is there a second? Saying none, the motion fails for lack of a second. Now I'm open for approval of Resolution 2017-54. Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve Resolution 2017-54. Counsel is seated.
Is there a second? Mr. McElhany.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those, read the title, please.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Resolution 2017-54, resolution approving a contract amendment for capital improvement program, public information services.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
For the record, motion is carried. And we'll move into public hearings. Resolution 2017-21 and Resolution 2017-53. The next two items will be heard under one public hearing but voted on separately. I'm going to open the public hearing and invite the staff forward to give their presentation. Microphone, please. There you go.
So now it's on. This is my first time presenting to you in the chambers. Tonight, this public hearing is to receive input on the proposed 2017 Annual Action Plan and also the amendments to the 2016 Annual Action Plan. Afterwards, we, hopefully, the council will vote to adopt the two action plans. And this presentation is going to encompass how CDBG funds will be used over the next year. Each year, the city reaches out to citizens and city staff and area organizations to educate them on CDBG, get their concerns and ideas, and also to solicit project applications. Then we take all that information, formulate the city's next year's draft annual action plan. Each year, the annual plan must be in compliance with the needs identified in the consolidated plan. And each annual action plan identifies then the specific goals and activities that will take place. Those activities could include housing, economic development, neighborhood revitalization, public work projects, public services, and fair housing activities. So the 2016 through 2020 consolidated plan that you adopted last year, these are their top needs identified in the plan. Each year, these top needs provide the framework in which we put together the annual action plan. Rather serves like a roadmap. So the proposed 2017 Annual Action Plan identifies and prioritizes community development, economic development, and housing needs. It sets goals, project goals, and outcome measurements. It develops a strategy to target those federal funds, and it serves as part of the application for HUD that we submit to HUD for the funding. The area in pink, this is the target area, is where most of the funding will be spent. This year, we increased our outreach from last year by about 200 organizations. Plus, we incorporated additional social media and placed meeting notices in Spanish in La Princesa de Colorado. So this campaign, it resulted in 245 contacts, and these ideas and concerns that were brought forth were the foundation of the staff's annual action plan recommendations to council. Twenty-one projects were submitted for consideration, and upon further review, nine projects were withdrawn because of inadequacies. So the remaining 12 projects were ranked and funding amounts were recommended based on the above scoring criteria. So let's take a look at what the recommendations are. And if we could take note of, Public Services does have a 15% cap as provided by HUD. And the table will start with those Public Services. Number one was domestic violence victim support. This will assist 29 families escape their abuser. The second is the Recreation Activities Scholarship Program. It provides expansion of the existing discount program of recreational activities for lower-income residents in the city of all ages. The fair housing portion of it, we're going to produce 2,000 color bilingual brochures, purchase some display materials, and host a local training seminar here in Commerce City. And these types of activities are mandated by HUD. The Residential Resource Directory, this will produce 3,500 color bilingual booklets, and it will assist lower-income residents in accessing service providers that provide services here in Commerce City. With the remaining funds of $274,751, we propose, as you'll recognize, the sidewalk construction and repair and bus stop improvements. And this is a continuation of last year's program and will take place also in the target area. And the new one also is the home repair program. And this program will help 16 homeowners rehabilitate their home with a grant of $5,000. We will obtain and review the applications, inspect the home, prioritize the needs, and prepare a work plan with cost estimates, and then proceed on with the grant. So, looking again at the needs list, the top needs list, this year in the 2017 Annual Action Plan, we're able to address four additional needs within the community whilst keeping neighborhood revitalization and fair housing going. So switching gears a bit, turning to the 2016 Annual Action Plan, last year's plan, currently it contains these projects. Unfortunately, though, under HUD guidelines, the Quebec Street Sidewalk Program is not eligible. So instead of losing that $100,000, we propose that we take out in the plan sidewalk construction on Quebec Street and sidewalk construction in Core Historic City and replace it with sidewalk construction and repair of the Core Historic City area and for the same dollar amount. And this proposed amendment installs the new sidewalks, fixes the old ones, and still helps us meet our connectivity and accessibility goals in the target area. It is eligible for CDBG funding. It fits within the consolidated plan. It keeps the funding within the target area, and Public Works can alter the project within the required timeframe. So staff recommends the approval of the 2017 Annual Action Plan and approval of the amended 2016 Annual Action Plan, and we further recommend the submission of both adopted plans to HUD for CDBG funding. So the staff is here for any questions you may have.
Does the council have questions? Of the staff at this time, Mr. Amador?
If we could move to Slide 13 to 15, where we talk about remove sidewalk construction on Quebec Street, sidewalk construction Core/Historic City, and replace with sidewalk construction and repair Core Historic City. For clarification, in my mind, this consolidates the same scopes of work of the top two and just has a little bit of word semantics, if you will.
To a degree. However, we cannot do the Quebec Street work. It does not primarily serve residential areas. That's why it wasn't eligible. So we're taking that $100,000, still working in the target area, just not on Quebec Street.
Understand. Thank you.
Any other questions for the staff? Any other questions for the staff? Saying none, thank you. Steve, Mr. Douglas.
So this is for '16, but it's actually going to go into '17, correct?
I'm sorry.
This is for '16, but this is going to flow over to '17 as well, right?
We're talking about two plans. The 2017 actually starts October 1st and then carries over to September 30th. And then the 2016 Annual Action Plan started last October 1st, and it will end September 30th.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, is there anyone in the audience that has any questions concerning what's before the council? Saying none. I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm open for a motion in a second to approve Resolution 2017-21. Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve Resolution 2017-21. On first season, council is seated.
All right, I need a second. Mr. McAldowney?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2017-21, Resolution approving 2017 Annual Action Plan.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I need a motion to take care of Resolution 2017-53. Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve Resolution 2017-53. Counsel is seated, the amended action plan for 2016.
Mr. Diaz.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Will the attorney read that title, please?
Resolution 2017-53, Resolution approving 2016 Annual Action Plan as amended.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're going to move on to annexation hearing. The next three items will be heard under one public hearing but voted on separately. It's AN-245-17 slash Z-781-02-04-05-06-10-17 slash Resolution 2017-42. I'm going to open the public hearing and invite the staff forward to give the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Because it's an annexation hearing, I'm going to begin by asking Planning Manager Timms a few questions for the record. Can you state your name and position for the record?
Sure. Name, Steve Timms, position, planning manager here with the city.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Are you familiar with the annexation case file, AN-245-17, the annexation petition, and the area proposed to be annexed?
I am, yes.
Has the city council adopted a plan for the area to be annexed pursuant to CRS 31121051E?
Yes.
Is at least 1/6 of the area to be annexed contiguous with the existing boundaries of the city of Commerce City?
It is, yes.
Does a community of interest exist between the areas proposed to be annexed and the city of Commerce City?
Yes.
Are the areas proposed to be annexed urbanized, or will they be urbanized in the near future?
Yes.
Are the areas proposed to be annexed integrated or capable of being integrated with the city of Commerce City?
They are, yes.
Have all the owners of the lands to be annexed signed the petition for annexation?
Yes.
Have annexation proceedings been effectively commenced for any of the land proposed to be annexed to any other municipality?
They have not, no.
Will the proposed annexation result in the detachment of area from any school district and the attachment of such area to another school district?
No.
Do the annexation petitions meet the requirements of law?
Yes.
Will the proposed annexations have the effect of extending the boundaries of the city of Commerce City more than three miles in any direction from any point of such boundary in any one year?
They will not, no.
Is the entire width of any street or alley proposed to be annexed included in the annexation?
Yes.
And finally, have all requirements of CRS 3112104, CRS 311215, and Section 30 of Article 2 of the state constitution been satisfied with respect to this annexation?
Have, yes.
Thank you. Those are the questions for me.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and let Mr. Grammer proceed.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council. We do have an annexation case and a zoning case tonight. 245-17 is the annexation, and the zoning is the 781 with all those suffixes, 02, 04, 05, 6, 10, and 17. This is an annexation at the request of Shea Homes Annexation and Annexation Zoning of this particular property. This particular property is about two acre, I'm sorry, 20 acres in size, located north and west of the King Supers Development shown here in the bottom part of the screen with Chambers running this way and 104th here on the bottom of the screen as well. You'll see all of this area in orange is part of the Reunion PUD. This area here is part of the Second Creek Floodplain. And then this area directly to the south, there's four five-acre parcels in unincorporated Adams County. Those are not part of this annexation request. The property is currently zoned Adams County Agricultural. The designation in the comprehensive plan does call it out to be residential medium with also open space there as well. And you'll see the red there is the commercial King Super Shopping Center. So just some site photos that show what's occurring on the property, looking northwest and south and east, the property is currently vacant. There's no structures on it. And again, you see the Adams County Farmhouses, rural properties to the south, and then across Chambers there as part of Reunion and Buffalo Mesa. So the request is from Shea. It is to annex this property and zone it as part of the Reunion PUD planned unit development zoning designation. The future development of the property will be a portion of Reunion as part of their Village Eight development. They're, you know, they're filling out basically their development on the east side of Chambers, and so they're now looking at the next phases, which will be Village Eight going from 104th up to 112th. This annexation and zoning will streamline future development of the property. Right now, no applications have been submitted for a concept plan. Staff's not aware of any particular builders in line for this area, but this is kind of the first step needed to start master planning that Village Eight. As relates to the Reunion PUD Amendment 4, this was actually approved by city council back before the King Supers. We had to amend the reunion development to allow for a King Super store of that size. And then you'll see that just to the north and west of it is this cross-hatched area. So that's the area that's in question here. It's actually covered in this Reunion PUD Amendment Number 4 and does lay out the use and bulk requirements, again, for residential with medium density, typical of what you see in the existing reunion neighborhoods. In terms of annexations, annexations are discretionary application. They do not go to Planning Commission, only the annexation zoning does. So the development review team or staff analysis of the annexation did find that the annexation does comply with state law and the Land Development Code. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the best interest of the city is served through an annexation. It is within the municipal service area. It can be integrated into the city. Capacity will exist to serve the user at the time of development, and then it will not limit the city's ability to integrate surrounding properties into the city, especially those to the south at such time in the future of those annex. In terms of the annexation zoning, this is a little bit different than a traditional rezoning application. The Land Development Code basically specifies one of three options available for city council in terms of approval criteria for an annexation zoning. Those three criteria are, number one, the zoning is most compatible with the city's comprehensive plan, which would be medium density residential and open space. Another option is to zone the property that's the most compatible with the county zoning, since the county zoning is agricultural. The Planning Commission felt like agricultural was not the appropriate zoning when it comes into the city. And then the same thing, last one, the zoning is most compatible to the present use of the property. The present use of the property would be kind of a vacant agricultural, again implying that agricultural is the correct zoning. Planning Commission felt like, number one, the comprehensive plan through the Reunion PUD Amendment Number 4 is the appropriate zoning for this parcel. In terms of public comment, as of this date, staff received one request for additional information. It was a property owner to the south, just wanted to ensure that their property was not going to be annexed, and once they found out it was not, they were content with their request. In terms of the annexation request, again, this is from the development review team staff. They are recommending that city council vote to approve the annexation. And then in terms of zoning, this did go before the Planning Commission in May. It was voted five to zero to forward this request to city council for approval. And with that, that concludes city staff's presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions. And then the applicant for Shea is here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Timms. Is there any questions by the council for the staff? Mr. Teeter.
Yes, I'm just, thanks for the presentation. Yes, I'm just curious, because this is a reunion now. Is this section going to pick up the 27 mills to outpay down that fee that we're charging up there?
Any, in terms of property value or property taxes and things like that? My understanding is that it's covered under the Metro District, and so it'd have the same mill levies that are found within the other parts of Reunion as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions of council? Mr. Douglas.
The land that's just to the south, that's the land that borders King Supers, is correct? To the west?
There's a, there's a little bit, actually Shea owns a little bit. There's an empty little sliver there on the western part of the, where the parking lot ends. So there is a little bit of developable commercial land for Shea, and then start the unincorporated pieces.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for the staff from the council? Saying none. I'd like to invite the applicant forward to provide additional information and ask any questions that may be necessary. Good evening.
Good evening. Ryan McDermott with Shea Homes, 9380 Station Street in Lone Creek, Colorado. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. I think Mr. Timms did a very good job summarizing kind of the annexation request that we have in front of council tonight. I think simply put, summarize it is just kind of a hole in the donut that we're trying to get annexed in that fits the rest of the property within Reunion that has already been annexed into the city. So simply put, we're just kind of cleaning up some borders and trying to get things to fit the rest of the Reunion development. We're happy to take any questions.
Does the council have any questions? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, sir. Hey, thanks for being here. Appreciate that. Since this is going to be annexed into the city in portion of, in parts of Shea, will this become part of Metro District 2?
You know, I'm not quite sure which Metro District will be part of at this date. You know, obviously, those borders change as development occurs, so I'm not quite sure, Mr. Douglas, what Metro District that'll be in at this time.
Okay, because I know Metro District 2 is the King Supers property, and then the property just to the north.
Correct.
Up to 112.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. McAldowney?
Thank you for, thank you for being here tonight. My question relates to really sort of a mental note I want to place. As this property firms up in terms of its development plan, I just want to make a reminder of hope that Shea and any of the development that occurs from a residential perspective on these lands will continue to participate in the 27J Capital Facility Foundation with participant agreements being secured for any of those residential lots to help continue to offset those capital investment needs for the school district. I know Shea is obviously a founder of that organization and that effort and has continued to participate, so I want to acknowledge that participation and just plant that seed to hope that we see continued participation as the additional filings begin to come down.
Certainly, and will continue to participate. We believe, you know, schools are a big part of the story for Reunion and the city of Commerce City, so anything we can do to help the school district will definitely continue to do.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Saying none, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I pause you for just a moment?
Yes, ma'am. Getting a little bright. I know. I've been watching them over there squinting. Does them good every once in a while.
Thank you for your patience.
Yep, all right. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the city council on the matter of annexation for the Shea development tonight? Seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And I'm open for a motion in a second to approve Resolution 2017-42. Mr. McAldowney? Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2017-42. All those in favor?
May I read the title?
Why don't you read the title first?
Thank you. Resolution 2017-42, Resolution Making Findings of Fact by the City Council of the City of Commerce City and its Conclusion Relative to the Eligibility of Anexation to the City of Commerce City of the Property with PIN Number 172300000279, generally located at north of East 104th Avenue and west of Chambers Road, Commerce City, Colorado, in AN-245-17.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion in a second to introduce ordinance AN-245-17 by council as seated. Mr. Damador?
So moved.
Mr. McAldowney?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
AN-245-17, An Ordinance Approving and Accomplishing the Anexation of Contiguous Unincorporated Territory Described in Exhibit A Attached Here Two and Made Apart Hereof, Generally Located North of East 104th Avenue and West of Chambers Road, PIN 17230000279, Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Are your lights flashing?
No.
Not at all?
No.
Okay. Sorry. Councilman Amador?
Yes.
Councilman Teeter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carson?
Yes.
Councilman Diaz?
Yes.
Councilman McAldowney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Elliott? Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Bullock?
Yes.
Mayor Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, your vote is nine aye, zero nay.
Thank you. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion in a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on Case Number Z-781-02-04-05-06. Mr. Douglas?
So moved.
Mr. McAldowney?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion in a second to introduce ordinance Z-781-02-04-05-06-10-17 by council as seated. Mr. Teeter?
So moved.
Councilwoman Carson?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read that title?
Ordinance Z-78102040506, 1017, An Ordinance Approving the Reunion PUD Zone Document Amendment Number 4.
Thank you. Now I need a roll call vote.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Councilman Amador?
Yes.
Councilwoman Elliott? Councilman Teeter?
Yes.
Councilman McAldowney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carson?
Yes.
Councilman Diaz? Mayor Potem Bullock?
Yes.
And Mayor Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the vote is nine aye, zero nay.
Motion is carried. Now we move into resolutions. We have Resolution 2017-63. I'd like to invite, thank you, Mr. Timms. I'd like to invite the staff forward to give their presentation. Who's giving the presentation? Come on, Roger. I know the sun was in your eyes, but it didn't, it wasn't that bad. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we had discussed this back on May 17, and at that time, I had the hope, based on comments from the financial sector, that we would be able to use the water rights as collateral for doing some type of lease purchase. Unfortunately, once we did a formal request for proposals, that turned out to not be the case. So the question here is, are we willing to proceed? And there's two parts to that question. One is, does the city want to purchase more FORA water so that South Adams County Water and Sanitation District can purchase augmentation water, as we discussed back on May 17? And then if that is yes, then are certificates of participation using the MSC, the Municipal Service Center, as collateral and acceptable means of financing the purchase for council? And then are those financing terms acceptable? So I'll run through this very quickly. We had talked about, you know, we could use cash, but again, in review of our cash balance, we don't, don't have enough really to justify tying up that much money of our cash. we don't, don't have enough really to justify tying up that much money of our cash for this type of a purchase. In fact, it would deplete the fund balance and the general fund if we tried to do that. We talked about various types of debt. Bonds are not recommended because of the cost and it would need to have a vote. Certificates of participation, we didn't want to do that using buildings, but it turns out that is our only way that we can do it, because we had tried to ask the financial institutions to accept the water rights as collateral and they will not do that after further discussion. So since these COPs would require the collateral of existing buildings, the Municipal Service Center is the one that's closest in valuation to the amount that we're proposing to finance. So we're proposing to finance six and a half million and the Municipal Service Center is 6.8 million for the building, buildings by themselves and the land. There are some risks with proceeding this manner. There's the risk that there would be another recession and building permits drop off and the result would be that water acquisition fee revenue would drop off as well and then we would have to short, we would have to fund the shortfall from the general fund. Another risk is that even though this is not legally called debt, it, the banks look at it when we look at the entire pro forma of the city and so they, they review this when they look at the bond rating that's issued to the city. In addition, there's an opportunity cost and that opportunity cost is basically being able to use the collateral of the Municipal Service Center for some other type of certificates of participation for, for a different project. So those are the risks involved here. One of the mitigations for the risk of a recession is that the proposed funding is coming in at 391,000 per year and currently the revenue that is being generated by the water acquisition fee is about $500,000 per year. So the Director of Finance and I discussed the possibility of dividing up that remaining amount and applying half to prepaying and keeping half in reserve, basically as a cushion for a shortfall year in the future. The other part of the proposal that came in is that they were willing to lock in the interest. Now, the interest rate is a great interest rate, 1.91, but it's only locked in for five years. And so what that means is we will have to refinance at the end of five years. So again, another risk and it's not as desirable as we had hoped for. We're, we anticipate sitting down with the bank and discussing some of these terms and trying to come up with more favorable terms, but again, the likelihood of that is unknown at this point. So I talked about the risks. The benefit is that there's no opportunity cost in terms of losing the opportunity to buy the water at this time, so that's the only benefit. In terms of the proposed sale itself, the city can defer the connection fee on both the 265-year ERUs purchased in mid-2016 and the currently proposed 4A sale. And so the result is that we'll gain another 63.8 ERUs from the previous purchase. So our recommendation is to go forward, but again, the decision is entirely council's. So these are our recommendations and I, I should note that the ordinance authorizing the financing, we have two items on the agenda. One is the resolution approving the amended and restated Water Resource Agreement with South Adams County Water and Sanitation District. And then the second is the ordinance that would authorize using the COPs as financing tool. And the ordinance is a parameters ordinance and so it shows really high interest rates and repayment rates and that type of thing. Again, just showing the outer borders of what's authorized. Any questions from council? Any questions from council concerning the 4A water purchase? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this matter? Mr. Serna?
Is this water going to be used for fracking in future?
No.
Possibilities?
No. Be used for development of the city. Okay. It'll go to South Adams for augmentation water for being able to develop. And from my understanding, this water will allow Commerce City to fully develop out to the airport. Okay. Be enough water to fill in all the undeveloped areas. Okay. Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience have any questions or comments concerning Resolution 2017-63? Seeing none?
Mayor Ford?
Mr. McBurlough?
Just one minor correction. The ERUs the city is acquiring through this purchase would be used for the construction of city facilities in the future.
Correct.
In an indirect way, as Mr. Tinklinburg mentioned, the water that we are purchasing now allows the Water District to buy some additional water resources for future city development.
Correct.
Thought it was worth making that.
I'm glad you did.
Clarification.
All right. So the 63 ERUs that we net go to city facilities? And then it allows, because we're purchasing this water, allows them to augment it and have water for future development of the rest of the city? All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none. I'm open for a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2017-63. Mr. Bullock?
So moved.
Mr. Macaldonny?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2017-63, resolution approving amended and restated Water Resources Agreement for Phase 4A ERUs.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. And we have ordinances on first reading. We have ordinance 2134. I'd like to ask the staff to review the material.
Troy Smith standing in for Cheryl Carstens tonight, who was not able to be here due to a family emergency. This is the 2017 reappropriation ordinance request. I'm going to briefly run through the items and then if you have any questions, I'll attempt to answer those for you. First item on the reappropriation request is a PD donation fund and this is a fund that's been in place for many years, is just being carried, funds being carried forward. The second one from community development is the Derby Catalyst Funds. Two requests from 2K to hire proposed full-time recreation positions. This is the amount of money to advance hire those individuals in 2017 and get them trained before the new rec center opens. The remaining portion of their salary and benefits would be included in the 2018 budget as a request. The next item is also 2K, that's with respect to aquatic chemicals. We learned in the first year of operation of the pool that we needed more chemicals than we had budgeted for. This would allow us to continue to operate with the required chemicals in 2017. Parks Recreation and Golf request for replacement equipment and that is specifically a utility cart and a mower with a cab and a plow. We're proposing to use fleet retained earnings for that. Public Works MSC Training Room, which is used by all the departments from time to time for different training and also the city council has some of its meetings there. This would upgrade the AV equipment in that training room to be commensurate with the AV equipment that is in City Hall. Public Works, 104th Avenue, 3B, record drawings, those are drawings that reflect the built condition of the roadway on 104th. Community Development requesting a CDBG Housing Needs Assessment and this money would be coupled with money that's in the existing 2017 budget for community development to fund that plan. Same thing with the Irndale Neighborhood Plan. This 85,000 plus 30,000 that exists in community development's budget would fully fund the Irndale Neighborhood Plan in 2017. Economic Development, Aerotropolis Marketing Consultant. This is an estimate at this point in time as a result of our partnership in the Aerotropolis area, 50,000. Finance, actually at city council's request, we've advanced this into the reappropriation for your consideration for online tax filing software. Risk Management Outside Services, because of our reduction in claims in 2016, risk actually experienced an $87,000 reduction in our premium for 2017, which is great news. And this 15,000 would essentially be a putback into the risk management fund and allow them to reinvest those dollars into our safety program. You've previously heard about the Ralston House. This is construction dollars and this is formally carrying out the direction you had provided us to continue our partnership with surrounding jurisdictions. The LiveScan and fingerprint mugshot system down in the PD is actually broken and this is replacement equipment. Likewise, the golf irrigation well stopped working, one of the two that we have at the golf course that supplies water and irrigation for the golf course broke in March of this year. This would bring that second well back online. It's actually drilling a new well. Public Works, 72nd Avenue Pedestrian Improvement Project, this is the Safe Routes to School Grant Program. The city has invested substantial money in this and to finish the project, an additional $177,000 is needed. Long Lane Striping Project, there actually is money in the 2017 budget. It was utilized to pay for work that was scoped in 2016 but not executed until 2017. So this request would put money back in the 2017 budget to continue that program and do the 2017 work in 2017. Sand Creek Drainage Way Master Plan, this was originally planned for 2018. Our partners have requested to advance this plan in 2017 and this reflects Commerce City's portion of that plan, which is about 15% of the overall cost associated with that plan. And finally, the Chambers Road Bridge Widening Project. This is a result of some overruns related to that project, specifically dealing with bridge lagging and piling and cost overruns that occurred there. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have with respect to the details on any of these, if you have them.
Does the council have any questions of staff concerning the reappropriation ordinance Councilwoman Carson?
Well, thank you for the presentation, but can you clarify this to propose full-time recreation positions at 23,000? So what is the, I'm assuming that's just the tail, end of the year or? And is, go ahead.
Yes, so it's to advance hire those full-time positions in 2017 and bring those people on board so that we can start their training and have them ready to be deployed when the rec center opens. The Parks and Recreation Center Director has looked across all the positions that we are evaluating for opening the new recreation center and has determined that these two positions in particular need to be advanced in 2017 in order to receive the training they need and have the lead time they need to be ready for when the center opens.
So where are we looking at, like maybe the, what the salary would be for just one quarter or? Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Troy. Asking about the Chambers Road Bridge Widening, this came in, this came in at a request of 17,350 as far as a cost overrun, I mean, needed to complete the project, correct? This isn't savings, this is additional asking because.
Yes, this is scope, that's actually work that's been completed on that project already. The project ran over its budget by this amount.
All right, so, so the work's completed, just not the funding?
Correct.
Right? And so is this, this a timely thing? When this happened, it couldn't come in earlier?
Yes.
Until now?
Yes, I think the, the issues. Bree, do you want to come up and address the specifics related to this?
Well, while, while Ms. DeAndrea is coming up, another way to answer Mr. Douglas's Items come up throughout the year and we do try to bundle them and just do one reappropriation ordinance. That's why the reappropriation ordinance comes along well into the 2017 budget year, even though these are things that in many cases began in 2016. We certainly don't have to do it that way. We could bring forward more reappropriation ordinances. So if that's some feedback from council that you would rather see them in a more timely fashion, we can, we can certainly do it that way.
Okay.
Ms. DeAndrea?
Yes, so Councilmember Douglas, as Mr. Smith indicated, there were several items related to the actual bridge components that ran slightly over, which equated just under the $18,000 requested.
Okay, and so based on the completion of this construction, and when it comes to widening that bridge, they'll be able to keep what they have, correct?
Correct, yes. So the, the girders that were placed on the west side of the roadway will be able to be used in the future for future roadway widening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions concerning the reappropriation ordinance request? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on the issue of the reappropriation ordinance request? Seeing no one. Open for a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 2135 by council, or 2134 by council as seated. Mr. Macaldonny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to introduce ordinance 2134 regarding the reappropriation. On first reading, council is seated.
Thank you. Councilwoman Elliott? I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney read the title?
Ordinance 2134, an ordinance amending the 2017 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by appropriating a portion of the unencumbered fund balance of the general fund in the amount of $471,197 and transferring a portion of the unencumbered fund balance in the general fund to the CIPP fund in the amount of $305,561, transferring $42,310 from the Information Technology Fund to the CIPP fund and appropriating a portion of the unencumbered fund balance in the NIGID fund in the amount of $68,565, the fleet fund in the amount of $47,517, Urban Renewal Authority Fund in the amount of $102,248 and the police donation fund in the amount of $45,622 for a total amount of $1,083,020 and authorizing the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. Ask for a roll call vote.
Councilman Macaldonny?
Yes.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Councilman Diaz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carson?
Yes.
Councilman Teeter?
Yes.
Councilman Amador?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Bullock?
Yes.
Mayor Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the vote is nine aye, zero nay.
Thank you. For the record, motion is carried. We'll move to ordinance 2130. Does council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this ordinance? Seeing no one. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce ordinance 2130. Council is seated on first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Macaldonny?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance 2130, an ordinance authorizing the leasing of certain city property and the execution and delivery by the city of a site lease, a lease purchase agreement and other financing documents in connection therewith, setting forth parameters and restrictions with respect to the financing, ratifying action previously taken concerning the referenced transactions and providing other matters relating thereto.
Thank you. Will you please call the roll?
Mayor Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Amador?
Yes.
Councilmember Teeter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Yes.
Councilman Mackel Downey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Vote is nine aye, zero nay.
For the record, motion is carried. All right, ordinance is on second reading, ordinance twenty-one thirty-one. This ordinance was not approved unanimously on first reading, so it was not included in the consent agenda. Want to ask if anybody in the audience would like to come forward to address the council on this ordinance? Mr. Serna?
Yeah, Mr. Serna, one four one two two, East Hundred and Second Place, Commerce City, In listening to the working sessions that we have had on this, and in hearing that we're wondering and that nobody sees these locations in perspective to our children, which we are trying to improve in their educational ventures as they get into adulthood, we haven't really looked at the data of how these types of things affect our children. And their curiosity normally takes over. Go back to alcoholism, the dangers that came that we didn't see, and how many lives it took. The people with experience and age can remember that, our fathers, our brothers, our sisters. And it took throughout the nation deaths of children because we perceived that they wouldn't see these locations. Economics is good, businesses are good, but we have to look at the growth potential and mistakes that we make sometimes. We were, should be, at the end of twenty years, have a hundred and fifty people. It didn't come about. It wasn't nobody's fault, just economics, but our children need that opportunity. If you are a young person and you have children, you should know that there are inequalities in how families are brought up and the struggles that they have made because of society itself. I don't say that you don't need these in perspective to, you don't see it, and it could be right next door to a school if those possibilities come. You have worked hard to bring this city and administration to go forward in the growth of Commerce City. But take it slow when it comes to our children. It's not about money, it's about time and not regretting those mistakes that sometimes we make. And I'm not saying that you're making a mistake, but I think that you're moving too fast. The legislature did because we're doing what we're doing right now because they really didn't take a look at it. The expenses that are going to become in the near future is staggering. So I'm asking people to look at our school systems and the amount of money and funds that we work, Boy Scouts coming in here, children coming in here. Give them that opportunity. Seniors that are here, with or without hair, need to give that guidance as to why we need separation from our school buildings. There are areas that maybe, for any whatsoever reason, won't get that opportunity, but the people in these neighborhoods need that opportunity to breathe. This country's growing too fast. We are sitting in the middle of a melting pot that brings in everybody from this nation. Take a look at that, it's there. And all I ask is, be patient, look at how it's going to work, get more data in perspective to your police department, your administrators, and then work with it. Don't just say, oh, people don't see it, or I want my beer. You'll get your beer, but there's a lot there that hasn't been worked through. So just be patient, there's plenty of room, and we don't want what's happening in Denver. Yes, they're growing on Brighton Boulevard, and we can call it the Green Road or whatever, the Green Mile or whatever, but look at what it's creating. They're coming, the curiosity is there. I took a trip to the monument in South Dakota. We were almost at the monument, the Sheriff Department. We were in the center of about four cars. They were from all parts of the United States, including Colorado, which was us. Who do you think they stopped? They stopped me, okay? I got away with just a warning, but why did they stop? We were all going at the same speed limit. Think about our children going from one location to another and what's going to happen to them because they are at school and they're not learning, or they are at school and they take, take this into their, because it's at home. I'm not concerned about the adults, I'm concerned about our public schools. We spend a lot of money up north to bring in these schools, and it took a while. We spend money here for a Boys and Girls Club, and it's working. But give these children the opportunity before, okay, you make that decision. Businesses will always be there, but give our children that opportunity. The soldiers need it for pain, people, mental health, need it for pain, stress, need it for pain, somewhere along the line.
Mr. Serna, let me...
Yes.
I just want to stop you for a second because I want to make sure you understand. The ordinance that's before the city council tonight on second reading is the state required distances from schools and bars and liquor stores.
Right.
Not marijuana.
Okay.
Only liquor store.
I'm just giving you that it's all, they're drugs, okay? And there's consequences to those drugs, irregardless of what they are. And they're, old people, long time ago, decided that distance to protect the children, and that's the way we should be. Take a look at our forefathers, why they did it. Because it's our children, it's their future, not ours. And give them time, irregardless of whether it's this or that, whether it's legal or whether it's not legal, children need to be protected in any shape or form because they really don't have a choice. And all of us here, in a sense, you are here to protect the community from the possibilities of harm's way. Businesses will struggle, but they will succeed because they have the right of way in perspective to funding and all that. Children don't. Parents are going to be too busy to be working to give children their time, and now you add this at the home, recreation, on down the line, growing, having places for them to whatever, drink, whatever. These are things that you have to take in mind, not just the funds. And I know that I may be a pain, but somebody's got to speak for these kids because right now, nobody's speaking out, and I get to wonder why. There's a lot of ills in these growing pains that we're going through. So think about it, and think about it hard, before you make any decision when it comes to anything that's got to do with drugs in perspective and how they're going to be mixed, irregardless of what ordinance you put into place. And I'm not here to put blame on anybody, I'm just asking you to give our children in this city the opportunity, as some of the other cities have done, to not let this get out of your control. Take time and get it right. We don't have too many chances. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward and address the city council on this ordinance tonight? Saying no one, I just want to clarify for the folks at home, this ordinance deals with the state imposed distance restrictions from liquor stores and bars to schools. Okay? All right. With that said, is there a motion? Mr. Mackel Downey?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve ordinance twenty-one thirty-one on second reading.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, will the city attorney read the title?
Ordinance two-one-three-one, an ordinance amending section eight dash one-one-zero-four of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to eliminate state imposed distance restrictions.
Thank you. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilman Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Ford?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Bullock?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mackel Downey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Elliott?
No.
Councilmember Teeter? Councilmember Amador?
Yes.
Councilmember Douglas? The vote is six aye, three nay.
Thank you. Motion is carried. Moving on in our agenda to presentations, we have the capital improvement projects program evaluation criteria. Now have staff give their presentation. Michelle, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So tonight, we're really here to present you the draft criteria for feedback and ultimately your approval, so we can move forward and then have a relative list of priorities available for you to evaluate and ultimately consider as part of your budget process at the end of August. Tonight, we'll highlight some of the input from the Capital Improvement Program Citizen Advisory Committee and also provide you with the schedule and next steps. So there are many reasons to create a five-year capital improvement and preservation plan. This idea, you may recall, originated from your 2015 retreat, and we've been making incremental steps really since that time to develop a true five-year plan. Certainly, it can advance your strategic goals and initiatives, but it also provides budget certainty and predictability for projects and helps us better manage the assets that we have throughout the city. Last year, you adopted a philosophy for our capital improvement preservation plan that really has guided our work that's continued from sixteen and beyond. You really asked us to focus on completing those existing projects and adopting a more conservative funding approach and really create a systemic program to help us better manage and position the city for the future. Earlier this year at your retreat, you gave us guidance that continued forming this program. One of the key things was telling us that the priority outcome areas, those six priority outcome areas that are identified in the work plan, should really guide the evaluation criteria for capital projects, and you'll see that in subsequent slides. You also expressed support for maintaining what we have. This idea of preserving our assets was something of importance to you. And we also talked about the need to fund a bucket, or at least identify projects that were more regulatory or operational in nature, that didn't necessarily compete with some of those other projects that might be a little bit flashier. And you asked us to engage your citizen advisory committee to provide recommendations for consideration. As a result, the capital improvement and preservation plan really categorizes the investments into three buckets. Traditional projects, which are new parks, new recreation, roads, and facilities; operational capital projects, which we categorized by signals, bridge replacement, warning towers, sidewalk connections, drainage and water quality, park and road enhancements and studies; these are what we transitioned to that regulatory bucket; and then last but certainly not least, preservation, really looking at that long-term asset maintenance and replacements of roads, parks, golf, flatwork. And our hope was that, as we move through this process, facilities and fleet and the information technology groups will adopt similar approach, but you won't see those in the CIPP section of the budget, those will actually be part of the internal services One of the other things we did was identify types of criteria to evaluate the projects using the 2015 criteria and the 2016 criteria as a foundation. As we continue to refine this, we're looking for more objective information. For those of you who sit on the Denver Regional Council of Governments, we've talked about this need for some objective criteria that gives some clear guidance, and especially for those operational categories, to create, again, a list of relative priorities that ultimately depend on funding availability and city council. So some of the evaluation criteria on the operational projects you can see here are very similar to that more objective criteria, and this is the information that we've asked whoop, staff to provide as we work through the process. One of the other things we did was get feedback from our Capital Improvement Program Citizen Advisory Committee. You may recall, we first did this in 2015 when we were developing the initial criteria, so this has continued to evolve. We provided them information on your planning process and the policy direction you have given us to date, and then one of the things we used was keypad polling to really identify that prioritization. So those were the results coupled with qualitative discussion that we used. We did talk with KIPCCAC about your hope to engage them in a more broad capital discussion beyond just the 2K projects, and there was a lot of excitement for that. They have some recommended structural changes and operating protocols they'd like you to consider in the future. So with that, we started asking for some feedback about the framework categories and what KIPCCAC thought would be most important for you to fund in this five-year period. And so what you see is a real interest in supporting preservation and that concept of taking care of what you have. The next bucket they would recommend that you consider funding, depending on availability, is operational projects. Those signals, those bridges, again, those things that are so important that you recognize to our city development. And then last but certainly not least, traditional... And then last, but certainly not least, traditional projects. Given that your initial direction was to council priority areas should guide capital investments, one of the things we asked KIPCAC was whether or not there was any priority within those six outcome areas. And so, using keypad polling, they identified this as their recommended preferred order for consideration. The other question we asked them, again, in terms of relative priority, was the operational categories. And again, whether or not there was priorities. There's a lot of additional qualitative analysis when you think about preservation or you think about safe multimodal network and then you look at this list. I think the takeaway from the KIPCAC during the discussion was really about, we need to take care of what we have. And, you know, for them, a safe network includes roads that don't include potholes or there's not flooding. Bridges are in good repair. Those were some of the comments that we heard from them relative to this category. But certainly acknowledging that the meeting we did do this at, there was quite a bit of flooding and there was a lot of other things going on. So, there could be some external factors that resulted in this analysis. The other thing we asked is whether or not there was any relative importance to the criteria of community benefit, regulatory mandates, safety benefits, or the state of good repair. Again, we are looking for some consistency with your 2015 and 2016 approach. And this helped to come up with the proposed weighting that we have on subsequent slides. But certainly, the group felt that if it had a broad community benefit versus just a ward-specific or area-specific, that would rank high. And certainly, the regulatory mandate of having to do something or being required to do something was something that should also rank high, as well as safety. So, with that in mind, this slide shows what the proposed evaluation criteria would be for traditional projects totaling 100 points. Certainly, if there's a prior funding commitment, so, for example, last year, you made some commitments to some key projects, such as 120th, such as an 85, such as 112th. So, if they had a prior funding commitment, there is some indicated priority. And then certainly, whether or not they're within the six, broadly, the six priority outcome areas or if they're in a specific order, is something that we ranked high. Certainly, community benefit, regulatory mandate, state of good repair, and safety benefit for 100 points total. From an operational perspective, we would propose, again, prior funding commitments, outcome area, your priority outcome area, and again, that relative priority. And then regulatory mandates and safety benefits. And certainly, if the projects are in a categorical priority, as I indicated earlier, there would be some points assigned to all of those for, again, a total of 100. Certainly, there's some other policy considerations that we've talked about previously. We're still working on the revenue projections for the five-year capital plan. But as we've talked in previous years, we're entering a conservative and lean era. And so, there is a need to think about how we provide some consistent and additional revenue streams. And I know that'll be discussed during the budget process. The other consideration for council to weigh in over the next couple months is what the relative priority of capital projects are related to operations and service levels. And so, that's certainly another discussion that I'm sure will be had as we go through the process. The reason why that's so important is because we asked staff to make some middles from 2018 to 2022. And you can see, over the five-year period, we have about $208 million worth of investments that have been identified. This seems like a large number, but if you recall, when we originally did the 2K and the Quality Community Initiative, we roughly identified about $250 million every so many years that we had to do to keep up with growth and development. So, this is just a high-level summary of what they are. Our hope is that we've looked at the evaluation criteria first and then we will apply that to the projects. So, again, we're looking for relative priority as we go through this five-year process. Our next steps tonight, as we're looking for your approval to finalize this evaluation criteria, again, it builds on past criteria as well as tries to accommodate some of the direction you gave us earlier this year. We will be looking to score these projects and then bring them back to you in August, giving you a sample of that initial prioritization and really focused on finalizing that five-year plan at the budget retreat, as you've directed. We're proposing that later this year, we would make those transitions and bring back to you some of those operational things that KIPCAC has asked for. And then we'll continue on to document the program, project management manual, and some other activities. So, with that, I'd be open to any questions.
Thank you, Michelle. Does the council have any questions for Michelle on the new plan? Mr. McAldowney.
Thanks very much for the presentation. Less a question, more a comment. I just appreciate staff's continued effort to work through this. You know, we've heard comments tonight that talk about planning and thinking ahead and making sure we put good thought into decisions that we make. And I think of anything that this council and this administration have done over the past five or six years is this continued focus on challenging ourselves around how we set priorities. I can say, and I'm sure others who have served longer than I, this city has not always made decisions about where to invest our dollars based on the range of tools that we now have in front of us. Oftentimes, decisions have been made by gut, sheer gut. Should this be done or that be done? Well, we like this project, let's do this project. And I think one of the things that this approach and what we've been really trying to evolve ourselves toward over time is, A, ensuring that we're listening to the community and we're filling the funnel of projects based on what the community says is important. And then we're weighing the relative importance of those or looking at what the wants are relative to how we can actually fund those things. And so, this is one piece of a bigger puzzle in terms of tools and steps that this council and staff are taking as part of a decision-making process. And I think it's important to acknowledge the work that you and your colleagues have been putting into this to help mature it. We've, you know, taken clunky steps along the way, but I think it's going to set us up as a city for success. It's going to help ensure that regardless of the transitions of councils, in theory, there is a system that will help new members of this council come on board and see a system of processes, if you will, that makes sense, that they can understand and that they can get plugged into and avoid some of the contention that we've seen happen over time where people headbutt the process because there wasn't a clear process. And that concern that something that we wanted to solve for wasn't being solved for because it was a personal issue or it was, you don't like my idea. And I think we've really collectively, as a staff and a council, evolved quite a bit in terms of moving past that kind of a model. So, I know that's a long-winded statement, but thank you.
All right, Mr. Bullock.
Okay. When I, I thank you so much for your presentation and everything. And a lot of it made a lot of sense. But then, when I looked at the slides on six and seven, and then we get to page 17, it seems to be a disconnect in their scoring on how they look at traditional and preservation and then how they scored according to funding it. And maybe it's just me and I just don't understand something that was happening there or I didn't see. But can you explain to me, especially in the police department, with, I see they fund it all into operationals, but the preservation and the traditional receive no funding. And I don't understand because... No, well, no, this is actually money on this page. You know? And at some certain time, don't they have to go back and look at the fleet? And over a five-year plan, they fund radios and cars and different things? Maybe it's just, it might be me. If it's me, please just say, it's you, Renee, so figure it out, okay?
I would never say that, Mayor Protem. What I would share is, we asked every department to categorize the projects submitted in this five-year period using the definitions we provided. But it's still, to Councilman McAldowney's point, an evolution and work in progress. In the police department, for example, there probably are traditional projects on the horizon, facilities, things like that, but not necessarily in that, in this five-year timeframe. Or, next year, as we're building that five-year timeframe, there might be something new that comes up that you will ultimately have to decide if that priority shifts. But in this initial submittal, we didn't have that. So, the only projects they submitted for this initial five-year plan were within the operational category. To your question about fleet and fleet repairs and things like that, fleet does have a five-year annual plan similar to this. But you will see that reflected in the internal services funds, not necessarily the capital program. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, I guess seeing you saying it was me, I didn't see it. All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
So, just to formally put a bow on this, is everyone okay moving forward with this evaluation criteria? I think the city manager would appreciate that.
All right, you want to make a motion?
I would move that this council formally support the program evaluation criteria as presented tonight. And we will see how they play out in our effort this fall and they will continue to evolve as needed.
Is there a second? JD? All right, I have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Brian, you got some direction. All right, now, we're going to move into administrative business. Why don't you introduce the discussion regarding the newly formed senior commission? Mr. McBroom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council did earlier this year formally create a senior commission. The ordinance that formally created the senior commission provides for 16 members, two of them are to be council members. So, what is needed is for city council to select two council members to serve on the senior commission just until the next reorganization meeting, which will be after the election in November. So, two council members would serve just from now until the end of the year, essentially. And then, city council will select all the city council appointees to the various boards and commissions at that time after the election.
Thank you. All right, we need two people that have an interest in serving on the senior commission. Mr. McAldowney.
I'm going to leap to a motion and I'm going to, they can deny it, but I would move that Mr. Bullock...
I was going to say, people that are going to be in continuity after the organization, because I'm going to be gone.
I understand, this is going to be a transition. I would suggest that we have at least one member who is going to roll off and I would nominate Mr. Bullock for that, or Ms. Carson. But I would also then suggest we have a second member who will be here past the reorganization.
Well, we have a seniors who I was looking at.
That's kind of who I'm looking at, but he won't look over his computer.
I knew that was coming.
So, then I'm going to restate my motion. And I would move that Mr. Teeter and Ms. Carson be appointed as the initial council members to the new senior commission.
All right. Is there any other nominations before I move forward? Mr. Bullock?
I second that motion.
As long as Rick and JD both are willing. Rick, you're okay with it?
Yeah, it's only a couple of months.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Administrative council business, does anybody on the council have any? Mr. Douglas.
Yes. I had a question for Laura Bauer on King Supers acquiring their liquor license. You know what that process is?
This will be our first. So, what I can tell you that I am aware of is that we have been contacted by the law office of Dill, Dill, Carr, Stonebreaker, and Hutchins, who is representing King Supers in the matter. They have found two liquor stores to purchase as part of the new retail liquor store slash liquor license drugstore law that went into effect. So, they do have two. They have reached out to my office. But we have not, they actually reached out to ask for help. So, we are looking into it. So, that's what I know so far. But an application has not hit my desk. I would imagine that it will be treated like any other new application. Once they've absorbed the two, provide the correct documentation that they have done so, then there'll be a public hearing. There would be a public hearing on the needs and desires for that license.
All right, thank you. And then, just so we could get an update on any kind of economic development that's either, we pull the permit, what process or which stage that they're in. Reason why I bring that up, there's a work stoppage across from 711 to 104th and Idalia. And still haven't got an answer, or the council hasn't got an answer exactly what, when and when, why, and what that process is. I heard last update was going to be a preschool or daycare.
That's my understanding as well. We'll get some written information out to council on next week's city manager update.
Okay. Because I know in the past, we had on our city manager update, companies are coming in as far as the permit process and all that. And that was nice to see that beforehand instead of, you know, asking or requiring an input from us on what the status is. So, appreciate it.
All right, Councilwoman Carson.
Just so that things don't get lost, because Fourth of July is not for another year, can we get it put on a calendar somewhere for a study session, this topic, and exploring all ideas of how we proactively go forward with this?
We'd be happy to do it. It's, I would suggest just make that a motion so that council can act on it and then we'll absolutely get it scheduled.
Okay. Motion to schedule a study session on the use of illegal fireworks within the city.
Is there a second? Mr. McAldowney?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Any other administrative council business? Mr. Douglas.
Sorry, I didn't say it the first time. Next week, we have a study session. And I was asking if we could have a special meeting after the study session around the topic of asking E470 for additional funds for the on-ramp opinion?
I would suggest to make that motion. That's the simplest way, I think. The mayor can call a special meeting, but it can also be done by action of the council.
Make that a motion, Steve.
To make a motion to have a special meeting after our study session next Monday. Subject matter is asking for additional funding from E470 for the on-ramp opinion.
Is there a second? Mr. McAldowney?
Before I second, has there been any prior conversation with staff on this subject so that staff has some sense of why we're meeting? Because I'm not prepared to support a special meeting without first having knowledge that you've had conversations with our key administration... that you've had conversations with our key administration members regarding the matter. And then, it would to me make sense, if there is something viable there, that we be guided to an appropriate meeting to discuss and act on that. But, I'm not prepared to, I'm prepared to support it if that's happened. If it hasn't, then I will hold on my motion.
Okay. By me?
Not yet. We got a motion on the floor. I'm looking for a second. I have a motion and a second. I'd like to go to some discussion first. I want to ask staff, you know, this is the first time I've heard of additional funding from E470. I know Steve's our E470 rep, and I trust that he has maybe some information that we all need to hear. Where are we at with the on-ramp to Tower, and do we not have a plan to fund it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have updated council a couple of times in the fairly recent past. Certainly, the ramp, based on our current estimates, will cost quite a bit more than the funding provided for in our agreement with E470. We have found a way to solve that funding gap. However, if there was potential for E470 to increase their funding, that would certainly be a tremendous benefit to us. I've not had any conversations with E470 about increasing the funding beyond what we agreed to in the agreement, I think, back in 2014.
That's all I needed to hear. Is there any other discussion before I call a vote? Mr. Douglas?
I'm on the Operations and Infrastructure on E470 Committee, and I brought this to Neil, who's on ahead of the, their public works for E470, and went over the fact of the funding that was requested back then, 2014 approved, going forward, how much it has escalated. And, I asked the board last week if I could bring this through the committee, see if there was any talk or support of asking for additional funding to help with the cost. That's the reason why I was asking about a special meeting is, we're meeting the following Thursday after the study session, and I want to bring that forward to the operation. I already have approval from them to bring it forward. Information as far as how that funding, where we're at with that, and what kind of additional funding we'd like, if we could seek from E470.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. I would like to then ask, do we need a special meeting now that we have the information that you've provided? Yet, have a request for a letter signed by me with the details of what is needed to fill the gap from staff, to get that letter signed and appropriated now for you to have for that meeting instead of waiting, and actually having to schedule a special meeting if we handle it right down. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I just thought next week, we could talk about what type of amount we could ask for.
Right, well, I think we can ask staff to provide us what that gap is, and then have the letter in hand, and then you'll be able to take it with you. But, it gives staff the time to prepare that, and since there's a motion and a second on the floor to have that special meeting, I would, I will vote no, just so that we can speed it up for you. Just so everybody understands why I would be voting no, is to not create another meeting and get everything underway now, rather than having to wait a week.
Well, I can rescind my motion and just...
That is even better. So, do you want to make a motion to have me sign a letter after the staff puts everything together and brings it to the council on, because that has to be done here?
Yeah.
So, would you please make that into a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for this, the city to support a letter asking for additional funding from E470, and maybe a range, not a set amount.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. McElhany?
I will second, so long as that letter includes the analysis of costs, original contribution amount, relative project cost increase, any of those factors that can be used to help reinforce the case that Mr. Douglas has outlined.
Is the motion maker willing to allow that amendment?
Agreed.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Staff has direction. All right, any other administrative council business before I move on? Mr. Teeter?
I was going to give Maria's people attaboy, but I see she's left already. But, they have already cut the dog track again this year, and it's looking pretty good right now. So, they're ahead of the ballgame.
All right, any further administrative council business? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did send out an initial City Manager Update. Then, we didn't, we did send out shortly after a revised update with a minor revision. We have several updates. One is announcing that our annual financial reports are now available on our website. An update on an irrigation well that actually City Council approved tonight as part of the reappropriation process. We wanted to get word out about that so that folks in the community don't have the wrong idea about the drilling activity on the Gulf Cars property. So, that's information there for the public and for your use, if you get questions. An update on a detour enclosure that'll be necessary on 96th Avenue East of E470. An update on some speeding concerns on Landmark Drive that came up at a prior council meeting. An update on some Highway Two reader boards that we have out as part of the Highway Two project that aren't working as well as they should. So, we have those updates there for you, as long as the monthly capital improvement program update, and as always, a look ahead at the City Council work schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Seasley.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Just one note, following the discussion at the study session last week, I sent a draft resolution with ballot language regarding the marijuana excise tax, which we can approve on and consider on August 7th. But, to the extent council has concerns or wants to review it, it can be, please give me a call, and we can talk through those and see if there are any changes required.
Thank you. All right, on my report, I'm going to hit the highlights because I want to elaborate a little bit more on the Adams County Mayor's meeting that I attended. First and foremost, happy birthday to Mayor Protem Bullock. His birthday is tomorrow, and I want to wish him well. I don't know how many more of them he's going to have. So, we need to celebrate him while we can, right, Renee?
That's true.
All right. Nope, I just want to make sure I get them in. Better safe than sorry type of thing. I want to congratulate South Adams Fire Department on their new headquarters building right across the parking lot. They did a great job putting it together. They've been in an old building, dark, and in the back end of it for many, many, many years, and they are protecting our community, and it's nice to see them have an opportunity to build a facility to operate out of that our residents can be proud of with the administration building of South Adams. I want to thank the staff for the work that they did to try to help work through the issues of building that building. And, Chief Vinsel and the crew, I know, seem to be happy that they're moved in, and I'm glad we're past all of the little chinks and clicks that happened throughout the process and that they finally have their building. A CED Executive Committee meeting, as you all know, we have a big event starting where they're bringing in site selectors to our community. And, July 31st, I'll have to go out to the Refuge as one of the first locations and do a welcome and speech, kind of highlighting this area of Adams County. I know that it's also the same night as our meeting with School District 14 here at City Hall. I know I'm not far away. I may be a little bit late. If I am, the Mayor Protem will get the meeting kicked off here. There's an hour window. I don't know how long I'm going to be over there and speaking, but it's going to be a good thing for all of Adams County. But, it's great that we have these site selectors coming here to get their information on things that we need to do to become more marketable in all areas of Adams County, and so I'm looking for the feedback. Concert in the park. I went the other night. I was very impressed. Thank you to Cultural Council, the two members that serve on our council. Was a great night. There was a lot of people in the park. It was a nice evening, and seemed like everybody enjoyed it. And, I was surprised. Every once in a while, I get surprised out in the public. And, a gentleman, after the concert in the park ended, walked over to our tent and said, "Hey, I just want to thank you and the City Council for allowing these type of things to happen in our community, because this is the first one I've ever been to, and it's awesome to be able to get the kids off the couches and people out from in front of their TVs and doing something in the community and enjoying their time." I saw most of the council there that night, and it was a nice evening. And, trust me, everybody was dancing except for Mr. Bullock. We gotta get him. Jason wasn't dancing either. Trust me, the mayor wasn't dancing either. We were sitting back and allowing Councilwoman Elliott, Councilwoman Carson to take the role of dancing. That's not in my job profile. I could tell you that. But, it was a great night, so thank you to the Cultural Council. They seem to be attracting more and more people. I could tell you, the food trucks were having a very hard time trying to keep up. And, the only thing I would say that you could actually build on is you need more food trucks, because there's just not enough to serve the need of the amount of people that were there that night, which is a good problem to have. Grand opening of Traditions Restaurant, formerly known as the Gala Gardens. I want to shout out to the owners of Traditions. We went there, did the ribbon cutting. The hospitality that they showed us was very, very good. Very nice, good quality people that I know want to succeed in our community. The one thing I was impressed with is they have three chefs. They have American food and Mexican food. We had some of their specialty Mexican food that night. It was delicious. They have a chef that does seafood only. They have a chef that does their Mexican food. And then, they retained a chef that was with Gala Gardens for over fourteen years that specializes in their prime rib. So, I haven't been over there to have a prime rib, but I'm assuming if it's the same chef for fourteen years from Gala, that we'll get the same quality of prime rib that we were getting when it was Gala Gardens. And I'm looking forward to going there and trying their prime ribs. So, a shout out to the community. You want to try something new? Traditions Restaurant, about 83rd and Rosemary Street. Great, family-oriented restaurant in Commerce City. Give it a try, and let them know what you think. But, good luck to Traditions. Talk a little bit about the Adams County Mayor's meeting. And, you heard me, when I was talking to the lady at Citizen Communication, it's a meeting with all the mayors of Adams County. And, most of us were there. I think the only mayor that didn't show up was the Mayor Bennett. So, North Glen, Federal Heights, our, North Glen, Federal Heights, Westminster, Thornton, Brighton, Commerce City, North Glen. I guess Orvato wasn't there either. However, they all had the same problem with fireworks. Thornton told me that their fines a thousand dollars. And, for some reason, what's going on, I mean, the Thornton mayor said, "Look, I was in the parking lot for the city's fireworks display, and there were people in the parking lot lighting off stuff that was at the magnitude of what the show was going to light off, and police officers walking through the middle of the crowd." And it's just with so much, you know, which one do you go write the citation to? I know that she's going to talk to her council and going to want more people cited. And that's a tough thing for police officers to have to do, because it's a holiday. People are having a good time. Last thing you want to do is be the bad guy with everything that's going on with perception of police officers doing their job. We heard the lady tonight, and talking to the other mayors, they also would like to sign on to that letter. That's why you were hearing it for the first time, because they haven't had a chance to come and give you that update. So, what they said is, they prefer that Commerce City doesn't send the commissioners a letter. They prefer that we reach out to all the Adams County mayors and have everybody sign on to one letter that'll carry more weight in trying to get Adams County to not allow the sale of fireworks that are illegal in the county. So, from my understanding, the county allows fireworks, but only up to a certain kind. You know, nothing that leaves the ground, nothing that explodes type of thing. You know, I don't know what all their parameters are, but they don't allow the mortars and stuff we saw coming out of our neighborhoods that you can buy at some of these fireworks places up by the Merchandise Mart and on Federal Boulevard. So, working with the metro, with the Adams County mayors, I think will give us a little better position when we take that to the county commissioners. So, the other thing we talked about was homelessness, the effect that, the health and safety issues that we're seeing on Sand Creek, on the Platte River. You heard about some issues tonight in the Derby area. I've received several calls from residents up around 73rd and Niagara area where they're just, I mean, it's every day. People walking up and down the streets with shopping carts, collecting things, and some of those things they're collecting are out of people's yards. I directed them to C3Gov to reach out. They were wanting more streetlights because of concern for safety, concern for their property. I told them that they'd reach out for C3Gov to get information about street lighting, but also to inform the Police Department that there is issues of theft going on out of their yards. I brought that up to those, to the rest of the Adams County mayors, and they're all having the same problem. And they're all concerned. And, you know, I know we are in a position where we're going to have to clean up the health and safety risks that are prevalent along Sand Creek and the Platte River. However, they're faced with the same kind of things. And what I'm getting at is, I want to be inclusive with the rest of the mayors and their communities so that we can have a plan to not push people out of Commerce City into Thornton or out of Commerce City into Brighton, and so that they don't do the same. If we clean up the Platte River and Sand Creek, these people move into Thornton, and then all of a sudden, now Thornton's got a sixty, seventy thousand dollar cleanup to do, and then they move back to Commerce City, and we just keep, it's a cycle. And, when Mr. Serna came up and talked, it is definitely something that the legislature is going to have to take a look at, because we do not have the means to be able to take care of, we don't have the services provided in our littler communities in Adams County to handle the magnitude of the services that are needed, which are in Denver. And so, when Denver pushes them out, they come over to Adams County. We don't have the resources or services, and we're just pushing them back and forth. And I want to, I want to make an effort to work with the other mayors of Adams County to reach out to the legislatures and legislators and see if we can get them to understand what our problem is, because it's a state problem. It's not a Commerce City problem, or a North Glen problem, or even an Adams County problem. I get emails on a weekly basis from commissioners... on a weekly basis from commissioners with concerns about the homelessness that's going on along our borders with Adams County and what are we doing about it? How do we collaborate? And, and how do we share costs? But it's not something you can bury your head in the sand on. It's something that we have to really take a concerted effort to work with our peer communities and try to come up with a plan of attack to not, not physically or mentally negatively affect the people that are homeless. I mean, I feel bad for those people that are homeless that, that truly are homeless. Then there's another group that choose to be homeless. And when I look at what we provide for our residents and the the trails and open spaces and everything else, and if, if our residents can't use the resources that they paid for. And now we're, we're having to spend money to clean it up so that our residents can use it. And we're looking at a plan to have to do this regularly. And right now, my understanding is Denver goes in and is doing a cleanup on a weekly basis. And that, again, makes our problem worse. And so we, we've got to try to have some kind of meeting of the minds between all the jurisdictions, including Denver, to say, you know, what can we do with compassion to deal with the health and safety issues that our community is faced with? And I needed to say that tonight for the residents that are having to deal with and, and not understand what the laws are and how, how our hands are bound when it comes to people in front of McDonald's, panhandling. And I get those calls, why are you allowing this to happen? We, the city, nor me, the mayor, or you, the council, are allowing it to happen. It is happening. And there is legislation that says that we have to treat those people a certain way. And it is very, very cumbersome. And our attorney will be the first to tell you. We'll get sued if we do the wrong thing in the wrong way and it's, it's a process and they're working through, trying to figure out what can we do, what can't we do, and when do we do it that we do it right? But we need to make sure that we're not just making the problem move from one community to another. Because I don't wish bad on anybody, but there's still an amount of respect that takes place with personal items, with people that want to enjoy services. We wouldn't want somebody to go in a new rec center and destroy it like I'm seeing the river being destroyed. And so I, I can't reiterate more, the health and safety issues and the compassion that has to be dealt with. But it is a very new and cumbersome thing to deal with. Jason?
I appreciate the comments and I appreciate you working with your fellow mayors on this. I think the, the one comment I take issue with is your last comment, which is it's a new issue. I, I'm a Denver native, born and raised in Denver Aurora.
Well, new to us.
When I lived, when I lived downtown Denver proper and would ride the, the bike trails north out of downtown and up into what is Adams County. There have been homeless encampments along that corridor for as long as I can remember. Certainly trends in terms of where development is happening have shifted things and moved things around. We've seen major fluctuations in what populations live in the urban core versus have moved to suburbs and have been shuffled around. That, that has been going on for a long time as Denver and the metro area in general have evolved. I think that the concern I have with this topic is it either has to be an all or nothing conversation in terms of not just solving symptoms, but solving root cause. And so clearly, part of the immediate need is to address the root or the symptom, which is we need to ensure public safety relative to where people are camping, right? And, and what they're doing with waste, et cetera. That is obviously a, a, a serious concern and you cited the $60,000 that we're going to have to spend. Certainly, I've seen evidence of our neighboring municipalities having their own challenges. If you take the bike path out west along Clear Creek through portions of Adams County, I've witnessed officers down in the, the Riverway dealing with encampments there as well. So it's not, it's certainly not unique to us and they're, they're dealing with it as well. The, the problem is why are people homeless, right? And this is, this is a problem that's been talked about for ages. We actually had council membership on homeless task forces when I got onto council and we, we have not had any active membership in those conversations for a long time, so shame on us. And I would look to this council to say, what are those organizations that if we have not been actively participating and we should be as a, as a municipality? So I, I don't want to take up too much time tonight, but I think this is a serious problem. The, the concern I have is what next from the mayors, right? Is it a letter that says we all need to agree to, to play nicely together or is it going to be a serious effort to say the mayors are going to collectively sponsor some sort of a summit? They're going to bring the right stakeholders to the table? That, you know, we turn around and, and look to the county to say, county, you need to lead the way here? I mean, to, to my sense, if you're going to write a letter as mayors, write, write it to the commissioners to say Health and Human Services is a county responsibility. It's not a municipal responsibility. And so lead on this. We're asking you to lead on this and we're there with you. But, I, I mean, at the end of the day, this is not a problem to your point that we as a city can solve. You need places for people to live, right? Denver has taken steps and many communities are taking steps relative to new and sort of out of the box ideas, be it tiny home villages or very small structures. And so when I think about the homeless, right, and having lived at 34th and Blake for years and had people move through our property out onto the railroad tracks to, to cut through what is now the Rhino District. You at least had shelters, a concentration of shelters in the downtown Denver area. Where else do you have homeless shelters in the metro area? So what are the alternatives if people aren't going to use the shelters in downtown Denver? And there aren't other shelters? Well, people are going to camp, right? And, and so what, what's the answer? And I think this is where we need the county and others to, to be, become engaged. Again, we've talked about it before, the, the need to talk about this with our state legislators, et cetera. We have housing costs that are impossible to, to deal with. We have that first little step in terms of affordable housing that's taking shape in the northern range and that's exciting. It is just a grain of sand on a beach of need, right? It is, it, it doesn't begin to touch the issue. And I think the underlying all of this, when I talk about root cause, is the health and mental health component of this, right? And so, once again, if we can't address one of the major reasons people end up in these circumstances, then it's just going to be something that we're going to continue to have to process on the back end. So you either, you know, it's an investment mindset. You either pay upfront or you pay later. We need to figure out how to help get people the care they need and there are obviously a million conversations in that vein going on right now that aren't going anywhere fast. But unless we take care of each other, then we're going to have to take care of each other in different ways. So I, I'm not going to keep going on. We have other business to attend to.
No, you don't need to, Mr. McLeod. I, I know that the, the answer is tough. There's, there's the cost of housing, as you mentioned. You know, some people are blaming it all on marijuana. I think it's a mixture of housing, opportunity. Colorado and the Denver metro area is one of the most sought after lifestyles for people to move to. And so it, it is a frustrating issue and it's something that we can't fix by ourselves. But the good news is we're having a conversation about how to collectively work towards finding a solution to not have it be a negative or health and safety impact on our residents. That's my primary goal. With that said, I think that covers my report. Mr. Bullock has something to add, since his birthday is only a few hours away.
This has nothing to do with my birthday. I just want to mention that on Saturday, Friday and Saturday, CML had their retreat. And as part of their retreat, they toured the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge. And I was a host for the tour on the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge and gave them a brief thumbnail history of the arsenal Saturday morning. And there were about 20 different mayors and city managers that are on the CML Executive Board. And the president of the CML Executive Board is the one that plans the retreat and has it in their city. And this year's president is Carol Dodge. And so she was one that planned the retreat and she thought that the arsenal would be a very nice place for them to visit and they were fascinated by it. I mean, the history is one thing, but they actually, the only thing they didn't see were burrowing owls and eagles. And, but they saw everything else out there. The bison were playing kind of hide and seek on Saturday, but they saw a couple of them. But other than that, they had a great time and I let them know that the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge is in Commerce City.
All right. Jada?
I just wanted to remind everybody out there that this Thursday is the third concert for the Music in the Park. This one will be at Pioneer Park. And prior to attending the concert or anytime between five and nine, please visit Chipotle at 5988 Dahlia Street and mention that you're supporting the Commerce City Cultural Council because we get 50% of the proceeds. And as the mayor alluded, these are wonderful events. They're fun for everybody. But there is a fundraising aspect that comes along with being able to provide these. So this is one of the fundraisers. And to speak of the, the food trucks, one of the reasons or the, the one and only reason that there is a limited number of food trucks is because they don't like to participate if they can't almost guarantee that it's worth the night of coming and that they can make the amount of revenue of food that they have to provide within their truck so they know. So they ask us to limit how many that we invite. And we do get a, a portion of, of those sales. But, but that's the reason that we don't just line the streets with food trucks. So anyway, so this, this Thursday is Rudy Grant, 6 o'clock.
Rudy Grant, did you say?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to say, did I say it wrong?
No, I'm just puffing this.
Oh.
Did you say Rudy Grant again?
And the following Thursday is the fourth and last concert. It will be at South Lawn in Reunion and that is Buckstein. So hope to see all of you there and hope to see all of council dancing.
That's not going to happen.
You won't see that.
Mr. Amador?
I just want to reiterate the Saturday, July 8th, the grand opening of the South Adams Fire District Administration Building, just right here off of City Hall, but I think it would be an injustice not to acknowledge the Historical Society. The Commerce City Historical Society. They did more than a phenomenal job of presenting the history of Commerce City on the walls and the, the fire district and the things that have gone on throughout the city throughout the years. So I just definitely want to acknowledge them.
Absolutely. Thanks for adding that, Mr. Amador. Now, if there be no, I knew it, Steve Douglas, go ahead.
Just to let everybody know that next Monday, I'll be running a little late. My flight comes in at six, so I'm heading straight over from the airport here. Thought I'd tell you now instead of me showing up, saying where.
I'll just give the staff a heads up. We're going to have to pull stuff off the consent agenda because he's going to miss the, the information at the study session. That's for you, Steve. All right, thanks, Steve. Any other reports before I close this out? No. If there be no further business to come before the City Council of Commerce City this evening, we are adjourned. And I'm going to call the meeting of the Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District to